And supports policies and funding to ensure that all lactating parents can access a full range of appropriate support from childcare and healthcare institutions, healthcare insurers, employers, researchers, and government entities. Signed by our city clerk Christine Rivera and myself, Kenmi Agashima. You're welcome to say a couple of words if you'd like.
Thank you so much for the proclamation, and I just want to reiterate that every year in August, we celebrate World Breastfeeding Month. Two years ago, we had our mamas from our chapters, our clinics get together at the City Plaza, and at the same time, all over the world, we had the mamas breastfeeding their babies. And it was such an emotional event. The families were there, the kids were there, the dads were there, all the support people were there. And we just want to keep supporting our families who can offer human milk to their infants and build support in their workspace, in their educational space, so that more moms can continue to breastfeed when they have to go back to work or school. So, thank you so much, and thank you for the proclamation. Thank you.
Okay, and Mayor Protem is going to be joining us on the phone. Is she currently on the telephone? Okay, I don't hear her, so we'll wait till she joins us. So, I have a conflict of interest statement that I'll be reading. This is where I ask if any member of the city council, city manager, or any member of the city staff has any non-conflict of interest on any item on the agenda.
None.
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 Okay, next is going to be public participation. This is where members of the public can speak to council for a total of seven minutes, three minutes for public participation, total of four minutes on a particular item that's on the agenda. If you can't wait and you need to leave before the item agenda comes to council, you're welcome to say a few words. Council may not be able to respond to you. We just asked that if you could wait when it's on the agenda, to wait until you do so. We also can't respond to any pending litigation as well. So, I usually start on my left, usually start on the first row. All that I ask is you come to the podium, or if you need, we can give you that little portable microphone there, and just state your name, please. Looks like Mr. Burunda is going to be first.
Hello, my name is Paul Burunda. I've lived here in this community 77 years, and I pretty much know my community from having lived here and participated in many civic organizations and a lot and lot of city council meetings. I was here a couple of weeks ago to complain about the Las Cruces Police Department's attitude towards not assisting me in 1920 checks, actually, that were written not by me, and the funds were taken from my bank. They were cashed at a check-and-go organization with very little identification to be able to cash a check. But the worst part of this is, is that about a year and a half ago, I had an $1,800 check that was cashed, and I had made out that check to El Paso Electric, because that's how I pay my bills, El Paso Electric and the City of Las Cruces Utilities. Well, somehow or another, a gentleman in Texas wound up with my check and wrote it for $1,800. The detective at the time, I asked him, "Have you talked to the El Paso Electric staff?" He said, "What for? They're not going to admit it." Well, he's very, he has a very poor attitude as a detective, if that's how he views investigations. But now I have 19 checks that are being fraudulently written in my name, and I got a call on Monday today, no, 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 wait a minute, Friday, that Bank of the West is closing my account. I've been with Bank, not necessarily with Bank of the West, going back to 1966, but from Western Bank, and the names have changed, but I've always remained in the same as a customer. So, I want to know if the city council, to make them aware that the Bank of the West is closing my account, not because I have done anything wrong, but because the criminals' road checks that they are responsible for, and they call, they say I'm too much of a risk. Now, is that fair to me? I think not. And this is the type of community that we have, a city council, this is the type of city management that we have, and a mayor, that don't care about what's going on with the citizens, as long as they get their damn agenda approved every Monday meeting. The police department, chief of police, has not notified me at all about the investigation that I reported a few weeks ago. The only one that has ever called me is the major from the state police. Now, one last thing.
Mr. Burunda, I'm sorry, your time is up, but you're welcome to leave that information with the city clerk, or email it, and we'll see what we can do.
Mayor, it doesn't do any good to talk, try to talk to the city manager, because he's never around. He's always in meetings, never talks to the citizens, and therefore, the only other relief, just a minute, the only other relief that I find is, remember one thing, at the state level of government, you no longer have protection of immunity. And if it takes a lawsuit against the City of Las Cruces and all of the city councilmen and the police department, then that's what is going to happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, that was the first row. Anyone on the second row? Just need you to state your name, please.
Good afternoon. I am Ann Chase, president of the Las Cruces branch of AAUW, which stands for the American Association of University Women. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having this forum. It's an exercise in democracy which none of us should take for granted. AAUW understands that there are more requests for this Go Bond money than there are funds. I am here as a representative of AAUW to present the case for the importance of affordable housing. We believe that it is of the utmost importance to provide the full $6 million for affordable housing, to provide safe and stable environments for people and families and homes they can afford. This is especially important now with the increases in housing, transportation, and food costs. The people who would most benefit from this investment are families with children, senior citizens, and households with a disabled family member. Affordable housing is not about homeless shelters, although those are important. Affordable housing is about providing safe homes for our citizens who are struggling. This includes young people who are just beginning their careers. It includes senior citizens who have spent their lives contributing to our community and economy, and are now subsisting on pensions, social security, or disability. It also includes single parents who are often trying to raise children on minimum wages. Studies on affordable housing have proven that a safe, stable home environment increases the academic achievement of children, as well as the mental well-being of the whole family. Providing affordable housing for low- and middle-income families adds to the economic vitality of a community. It allows these individuals to improve their situation and contribute to our community. These people are our friends, family members, and neighbors. Their children are the future of our community. The measure of a society or a government is how well it protects its weakest and most vulnerable citizens. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. I've been, I understand that maybe Mayor Protem is on the line. Are you there, Mayor Protem?
I am there.
Okay, good. So, we need to vote to allow you to participate telephonically, so I'm going to ask if there'd be a motion in a second.
Salute Graham, Second Bencomo.
Motion made by Councilor Graham, Second, by Councilor Bencomo. Christine?
This is on the motion to allow Councilor Gondara to participate telephonically. Councilor Abada?
Yes.
Councilor Graham?
Yes.
Councilor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councilor Karan?
Yes.
Councilor Flotes?
Yes.
Councilor Gondara?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Mayor Protem, earlier, we had asked, I read the conflict of interest statement, this is where I ask if any person of the, member of the city council, city manager, or his staff has any non-conflict of interest on any item on the agenda, so I need to ask that, is you as well?
I have no conflict here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, let me just kind of reiterate, so, Ms. Chase, I'll let you speak, but I'm going to ask, if you're here to speak about the bond issue, if you could wait until item 7, 7.1, unless you have to leave. Yeah, that's okay, no problem. I figured as much, so. Anyone else on that second row? You're going to have to leave, Liz?
Yeah.
Okay, sure, go ahead. Just state your name, please.
My name is Elizabeth Rodriguez Johnson. I was born in, and for most of my childhood, raised in subsidized housing in the Lower Rio Grande Valley in Texas. When I was 14, we moved to Las Cruces, because one of my uncles agreed to take us in. There were 12 kids and two adults in his family, so that's 14 people. We were eight kids and two adults, that's 10 people. So, 24 people total in what I estimate to be about a 1,600-square-foot home, three bedrooms, one bath. So, you know, for numerous months, it was a bit crowded. I left Las Cruces when I graduated from New Mexico State to be a mathematician at the Pacific Muscle Test Center in Point Mugu, California, which is about 60 miles northwest of LA. I left California when I was accepted into a program where I would do rotational assignments in the Washington DC area. And I worked on the Hill for a few months, I worked at the Office of Management and Budget for a few months, then went to the Pentagon, where I was assigned to work on what at the time was called the Reagan Star Wars Program. Okay? So, to make a very long story short, I never left, because the pay grades were much higher at the Pentagon than in the field. I retired from the DOD after 30-plus years. My husband retired from Department of Justice, and we came to Las Cruces not just because our money would buy more here, but because we were both familiar with the area. And since coming to Las Cruces, I've chosen to spend my free time in programs that give to the community. For instance, when Cafe was doing the work on raising the minimum wage, I was one of several hundred volunteers doing that work. When there was an influx of immigrants to Las Cruces, once again, I was one of several hundred volunteers doing that work. I have been very passionate, and continue to be very passionate, about getting out of the vote, in particular, in those areas that have traditionally low voter turnout. So, why am I here today? Not to toot my horn, because I know in any one given day, you guys have to listen to more horn tutors than you can count. But I'm here to offer you an example of what, you know, the profits that can be had when you invest in a community of need. Okay. Was that three minutes?
Probably.
Huh? Really?
Most likely.
Wow, okay.
We'll give you, we'll give you one minute.
Okay, so, I'll make it very short. And I'm here to, to, to support the Affordable Housing Act, and for those, I know there were some missteps when it was started, and for those who would say, "Well, these are just people who are trying to game the system," I'm here to say that gaming the system is really baked into the human DNA, and that the worst culprits are the people at the highest socioeconomic level. And these are people who don't pay taxes because they game the system so well, you know, and can afford to have yachts for their yachts. So, I would just say that I support, I didn't do that, okay. I support, you know, the Go Bond for Affordable Housing to the extent possible in the $6 million that's being asked for. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you, Liz. Okay, so that was still the second row. We're good? Okay, anyone on the third row?
Jane.
Jane, are you going to have to?
I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, how about on the third row? Fourth row? Fifth row? Sixth?
Sixth row.
That sixth row is where Juan and Rick are. Did you, you're seventh row yet. No one on this, oh, Eric, okay. Eric?
Thank you, city council. My name is Eric Montgomery. I'm the Regional Director for Governmental Affairs with El Paso Electric. Just wanted to thank the City of Las Cruces, Amber Vaughn, Natalie Green, for helping us get involved, Councilor Gondara, Mayor Protem. This last weekend, the Lift Up Las Cruces event was very, very successful, very well attended. We had a number of people come by our booth. It was a great opportunity for us to mix and mingle with our neighbors in the neighborhood, talk about some of the energy efficiency programs that we have, feature some electric vehicles, and just want to say kudos to the City of Las Cruces for putting on such a, such a really great event. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric. Just need you to state your name, Rick, please.
I'm Rick Grino. Thank you, mayor and councilors. Hello, everyone, and Joanna and Becky. And anyway, I have some good news for you today regarding Desert Hope Apartments. I work in that neighborhood. I work right across the street from the Dollar General, so I can be monitoring and coming down here, letting you know how things are going, so I just want to help you out there. Now, the more serious things, you know, why are Dollar General stores, in general, they're the doormat of our community, people laying around the front? I work right across the street. I won't let my wife go there or my daughter. Citizens in that neighborhood near Desert Hope have stated they won't go to that dollar store anymore. That is just stunning. That's their community. They're the most struggling stores in our community, dollar stores. I don't think it should be that way, anyway. In general, citizens and taxpayers are okay with helping people, but only if they will help themselves. The AA model, the Gospel Rescue Mission model, then I'll be generous. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay, that was sixth row, yeah, Juan.
My name is Juan Garcia. Just have a couple of quick questions for you. You're asking for more money for affordable housing this year.
Excuse me, Juan, can you not wait until it comes up for, on item number seven?
Sure.
Can you? Okay, yeah, because we won't be able to respond to you. This is public participation. Okay, so that was sixth row. Anyone, I think the gentleman behind you, seventh row, yes, sir? Just going to need you to state your name, please.
Yes, sir. Hello, mayor, remember me?
You look familiar.
Anyway, my name is Richard A. Di Maria. I'm 88 years old. I entered the military September 1950, when the Korean War broke out. So, that means I was in the military before any of you people were born. I was born and raised during the Depression and the Second World War. My idol was FDR, the man that didn't have to do the job that he did, but he did, because he was for the people, of the people, and by the people. Now, the reason why I'm here is because of the lack of respect, especially with neighbors. Now, if you will, mayor, I got to blow my horn a little bit.
I'm going to need you to kind of only talk into the microphone, because we won't be able to have you on the recording. Okay, so you have an award of merit to yourself from the City of Flint, Michigan.
Yes, sir.
Your clock is running, so you may want to speak.
Beg your pardon, sir.
I said, your time is running, so you may want to speak.
Well, I wanted you to be able to see that there are people in this city that even go above the little bit of extra every now and then.
Now, looks like you rewarded this meritorious citation for saving someone's life.
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'll share it with my colleagues here.
Now, the reason why I'm here, see all of this? This is firework debris that was all I took off of the roof of my home and my yard. And this type of thing, I thought, was going to be limited to where only they did it in approved areas, but evidently not. Anyhow, the main thing, out of the six homes that are close to me, there's only three of them that I, that I consider people that are responsible. The other three have no respect for anybody or anything. And I was going, but because of my time, and because of these good people here, I'll eliminate what I really wanted to say about that whole situation. But anyhow, how many people did, got arrested or ticketed for fireworks that they illegally did in their home area?
Yeah, Mr. Di Maria, I don't have that information handy. We can certainly email you that information when we get it.
Email, yeah. Sir, I'm 88 years old. I barely know how to use a cellphone. I got alone a computer.
Okay, if you want to leave your.
So, that, you young people are all, got your computers in your house, in your car, maybe even in your back pocket, but anyway.
If you want to leave your information, your contact information with the city clerk, once we get that information for you, we can have someone contact you.
Very good.
And thank you again for your service to our country, as well as your meritorious citation for saving someone's life. That was very brave of you.
Now, how am I supposed to contact this clerk?
If you want to leave the clerk your contact information, that would be great. Okay, that was the seventh row. Was there anyone else on the seventh row? So, Sarah, you're going to have to, you're going to want to talk on, on the bond issue, or?
Yeah, sorry, I won't be able to stay, because I have to take my daughter to driver's ed this afternoon, so.
Just need you to state your name, please.
Sure, I'm Sarah Smith, and I want to thank all of you for serving our city. I know that this is a difficult time to be serving the city, and there's a lot of big, complicated decisions being made. I wanted to share my thoughts about the Go Bond with related to affordable housing. So, I facilitated the community meeting last in June between Councilor Graham and the community members. Protem Gondara was also there, and we really heard what's happening to the people who are living near that housing project there, and how they are facing a really unsafe neighborhood at this point. They are scared to let their children play outside, they're scared to do gardening in their front yards, they're having to lock their vehicles in their backyard, sometimes even resulting in them not being able to leave their home, because there are people blocking access. So, there are a lot of issues happening there. I know you guys are aware of this. It seems irresponsible to me to fund further similar projects until we know that this situation can be fixed, because we know that this has really made an unsafe living environment for the people both in the neighborhood there, as well as the people living at the Desert Hope Project itself. So, it seems that there is some maybe confusion whether or not there would be any of these types of projects being funded with the Go Bond, but it has been mentioned in several Sun News articles that there would be further homeless or unsheltered housing projects as part of this funding. Looking through the meeting minutes and the work sessions, it really looks like the projects aren't well-defined at this point. Maybe there's some uncertainty as to exactly what's going to be funded. But I just wanted to make sure to mention that until those situations that have already been caused are being able to be shown that they can be fixed, it doesn't make sense to be putting more money and maybe causing more problems just like that in other neighborhoods. I'm also concerned about the lack of metrics for the people in those neighborhoods to actually see if they will see improvement with these things. I know that you guys are trying to implement different things to fix the situation near Desert Hope, but we don't know. We don't know what's going to work yet, and so, I would encourage you to please not put more money on something that we don't know if it's going to work yet, given the very strong consequences that have already happened for the people who are living near that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that was the seventh row. Anyone else? I'll get to, I'll get to this side later here. Anyone on the eighth row? Yes, ma'am. Just come forward, please. And anyone on the last row who's going to speak, if you want to come forward and just maybe sit up in the front, that'd be fine.
My name is Paige Ritter-McKane. I'm a property manager here in Las Cruces. We run over 600 units in the community. We've worked very closely with the community of Hope for over the last 10 years, and I've been able to see firsthand how housing positively impacts an individual and their situation, and that's why I am in support of the $6 million going towards affordable housing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just reiterate again, if you want to speak about this issue, if you could wait until we get to that item. If not, if you need to leave, we understand. So, council won't be able to respond to any questions that you might have on the bond issue, until we get to that item. Okay, so, no one else on my left? Okay, now I'm going to go to my right, first row, yes, ma'am.
My name is Renee Adams, and I'm representing the American Legion Auxiliary. I'm the legislative chair. I have to leave, so I'm going to be talking about the appropriation for the $6 million for the housing. It affects all of us, including veterans, military, and their families, and we certainly support the approval of this. Thank you.
Okay, no one on the second row? Third row? Fourth row? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. My name is Lorenzo Perea. I'm the owner and president of Solar Smart Living. I just want to ask for some support for the city building and inspection department. One of the problems that we're seeing is a very long period between the inspectors getting to our job sites. It's causing. long period between the inspectors getting to our job sites. It's causing some financial pressure on not just my company, but other companies that aren't able to get their customers' loans funded until the inspections are passed. Right now, we have a little over $200,000 in accounts receivables that we can't collect. All our equipment is either on a homeowner's roof, or their air conditioning units are installed in the homes, but we're just not able to get the inspections completed in what we would consider, you know, more optimal period. You know, it's taking seven to 10 weeks, 12 weeks possibly. So, I'm just asking, you know, that you consider staffing, you know, the building inspection department and the inspectors. As we work toward moving, toward electrifying homes, we don't install any fossil fuel-based equipment. It's all electric. Heat pumps, if you look up our company, we're leading in terms of the transformation of residential homes to, you know, heat pump sustainable homes. But the financial stress due to the delay in the inspections, and it's not just my company, I know other contractors are having similar issues. So, I just ask that you take a look at your budgeting for the department and see if you can do something to help us. Thank you.
You know, Mr. Perea, I know, I know you, met you four years ago, but let me leave you my card. If you can email me, and then we'll get with the community development city manager, or let him deal with that. I know in the past, we've, like many cities, have struggled with electrical inspectors, but there's been times where we've been able to, the city's been able to reach out to some others, whether it's a state or whomever, to help, maybe pay overtime to help out, kind of catch up on the workload, to get back to our normal pace. But again, that'll be, we'll work with the city management, see if you can work with the community development director. But if you could reach out to us and leave us your contact information, please. Okay, so that was the fourth row. Anyone else on the fourth row? Fifth row? Six?
Ma'am, I have a question, Mayor.
Hold on a second, Mr. Brundah. Sixth row? Seventh? So, no one else on my right? Okay, Ms. Brundah, you're gonna have to come to the podium, please.
My name is Paul Brundah. There's been some discussions here today that advocating for homelessness, for homeless people, and I agree with that. But we have a much bigger problem that these homeless places are causing the immediate vicinity...
Mr. Brundah, I'm gonna ask if you want to wait until that issue comes up, or on the bond issue. You're welcome to say your comments, but you've already exceeded your time on the first round, and I thought you had one specific question.
Well, I wanted to see if I could speak on this issue, even though, because I've gotta leave. But if there's two issues, this one, and I'd like to finish, if you don't mind, and then one other issue before I leave.
Okay, I'll give you a total of three minutes.
Okay. The bigger problem that I see, and I'm involved in this because of the issues I'm having with the police department, but these people, these issues are much worse than we think. We don't want to blame anybody, because that's the problem of why they exist, because we are always running away from the truth. You don't want to learn the truth. You don't want to know the truth. But see, these places are where all the drugs are going, are going on. There's a lot of criminal activity going on with break-ins, and all of the, whatever they steal winds up in these places. Okay? And I know, I know for a fact, because I know the people that are involved in selling the drugs. But if that man over there, the chief of police, would get off his ass and do something, then things would change.
Mr. Brundah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry he said that. I apologize. I apologize.
You apologize to the chief.
I apologize for that. I shouldn't have let that come out. But, on the other hand, on the same issue of the police, there's a, on today's agenda, an issue where Kerry Ryan is going to be appointed, or maybe not appointed, as municipal court judge. He's the same Kerry Ryan that allowed a police officer to commit perjury, which then I appealed to the district court, and I lost there, because the judge said, "I will never..." When I asked her about the issue of perjury, when she said that she would never hold a police officer accountable for perjury, this is the honest truth of what the hell's going on in our community, and no one cares. You're always running away from the truth, and do nothing about, about any of it. This is the reason why the Bank of the West is closing my account when I've done nothing wrong, because the police department is not doing its job. I have not done anything wrong to lose the privileges of my bank, but the city is hurting, because the police do not arrest these criminals who are involved in bank fraud. So, listen up, ladies and gentlemen. Kerry Ryan to be appointed as judge is like asking the devil to come give a sermon in St. Genevieve's church. I mean, really, we really want that type of judge in your city manager, city of Las Cruces? I think not. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so that pretty much concludes our public participation. Is that correct? No one, everyone had a chance to speak? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move to the next item, which is acceptance of the agenda.
Move to approve, Bencomo.
Second by Flores.
Motion made by Councilor Bencomo, second by Councilor Flores. Christine?
This is on the motion to accept the agenda as presented. Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Karan?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Gandara?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Okay, so now we're on item 7.1, Resolution 23-015, the motion second.
So, moved to Beta?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Beta, second by Counselor Flores, and it looks like David Ware from Community Development will be discussing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. David Ware with Community Development. I'm presenting the GEO bond questions for the 2022 bond cycle. And just to highlight some of the items we're gonna cover in the presentation, one, we're gonna give a brief introduction as to why cities use GEO bonds. Also, go over and summarize the public input activities the city's conducted, review the direction that was provided to staff from your June 27th work session, and then actually read the four questions that have been drafted, and then give you your considerations for action today. Again, GEO bonds are a funding mechanism cities use to fund large capital projects that have a citywide benefit. They're also something that doesn't often have a dedicated funding or revenue source, so it's one method to get these projects done. They're backed by the credit of the city, and then property owners repay the bonds over time as part of the city's debt service. As far as community engagement goes, the city hired ARC, Architectural Research Consultants out of Albuquerque to conduct a series of public engagement meetings, to do an internet survey, and also to have an ongoing GEO bond website. And so, at that time, they conducted nine public meetings throughout the community to receive their input, and then also provide general information on bonding and what it means. The city of Las Cruces, in addition to the meetings held by ARC, conducted two onsite, and we also held two virtual meetings to allow people that couldn't get out to participate in the engagement virtually. The city ultimately did two surveys, the one done by ARC, and then we did a second survey of likely voters to see what their input on GEO bonding were. As noted, there's also a website that's ongoing. The city council themselves had two work sessions, the latest being June 27th, at which, again, there was consensus reached on questions you wanted to consider. Just to go over that, the four projects that staff drafted questions to put on the November ballot were for the construction of a new East Side Fire Station, to continue to build out the East Mesa Public Recreation Complex, to fund affordable housing initiatives citywide, and also to make improvements and rehabilitation to the park and recreation facilities throughout the city. The first question goes to the East Side Fire Station, and I'll just go ahead and read it for you. Shall the city of Las Cruces issue general obligation bonds payable from property taxes in an amount up to $10 million to acquire, plan, construct, and equip a new fire station facility, including acquisition of necessary land? In regards to the second question that was drafted, shall the city of Las Cruces issue general obligation bonds payable from property taxes in an amount up to $6 million to acquire, plan, construct, and equip the regional recreation community facility known as the East Mesa Public Recreational Complex, including the acquisition of land? The third question was, shall the city of Las Cruces issue general obligation bonds payable from property taxes in an amount up to $5 million to provide resources to plan, design, construct, acquire, preserve housing affordable for low-to-moderate-income households, including acquisition of necessary land? And the final question was, shall the city of Las Cruces issue general obligation bonds payable from property taxes in an amount up to $2 million to renovate existing parks and recreational facilities? And as you recall, the total of this would be $23 million, and that's the amount that would allow the next cycling of bonds would not increase any tax burden on any property owners. So, that was the direction that was brought forward. Just to give you a timeline of what to expect, if you finalize the ballot questions today and approve the resolution, it'll be forwarded to the Doniana Clerk's office to be put on the November ballot. If you still have questions after the day, the latest that you can act on the questions would be August 15th, or your next regular scheduled meeting. So, you do have that as an option for continued discussion. And the last deadline to get those questions on is August 23rd. So, if you didn't decide it at either of those two meetings, you would, if you could meet your notice requirements, have a special meeting. And that leads you with your options that you always have. If you vote yes, that will approve the questions, as I've read them off to you. If you vote no, today, none of the questions would be forwarded to the ballot. You have the option to amend that, so you'd have to direct staff how you would want to change the questions, or add additional questions. And then with that, other dates, you could table that for further discussion. So, with that, I'll stand for questions. There are numerous staff that have participated throughout the program, and also our bond council is present that prepared the questions for the resolution. So, we're all, all present to help with any questions or additional information you need.
Thanks, David. Before I take questions from my colleagues, I want to share an email of my response I received, I'm sure my colleagues did as well, several emails throughout the last several days, and it was pertaining to what some of the comments were made here about our homeless residents. And so, of course, I'll just address them, and I'll say, "Thank you for emailing me." Please know that we're talking about two different items. The Desert Hope Project was not used with bond money, but rather dividends from our investment account of the Telsure Fund, which we contributed $500,000, and the State Investment Council covered the rest. The ballot question is for affordable housing, for projects such as Tierra del Sol on San Pedro Street, Alta Tierra Apartments on Madrid Street, Montana Senior Village on Montana Avenue, just to name a few. I hope the organization that is putting out these mass emails knows that Desert Hope was used for homeless residents. The affordable housing question is for residents who meet lower income guidelines, and not necessarily specifically homeless residents. Thanks for allowing me to give this brief explanation. So, I just wanted to clarify something. You know, I'm fully committed to affordable housing. I think this is something here that's needed. Many of residents had to leave. I can't imagine both those that are struggling right now to just try to find something that's affordable. I mean, rents are off the roof, and it's not just in our city, but in major cities, I see it. I try to keep up on that constantly, and, gosh, some of the landlords, I find it hard to believe that they need to raise the rent like as high as they do in one year's time. But nonetheless, that's what they do. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to my colleagues, so they can ask questions of yourself. I know I have Counselor Bencomo, Counselor Flores, Counselor Graham.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you so much, David, for the presentation, and for all the work the staff has done to get us to this point. I feel very confident in the way we're moving forward. Can you remind me, it's been too long since we voted on one of these, is there a reminder on the ballot that says, "This will not raise your taxes"? Like, is there that disclaimer on the ballot?
Mayor and Counselor Bencomo, I do not believe that that is the case. I don't know Leanne, or, no. I think the consensus is no, that information is not provided on the ballot.
Is it possible to be included on the ballot, Ms. Rivera, clerk?
Mayor, Counselor Bencomo, I guess that would be something we would have to discuss with the county clerk's office.
Okay, okay, thank you. Just 'cause some of the wording, obviously, I think could scare people away from voting on these good projects, but I guess that's on our end, too, some of the public education that we will be doing moving forward. Is that right, between now and November?
That is correct, as we provide information about the questions and the ballot. My understanding is staff has to take a neutral stance on that, just provide information, and not be seen as advocating or subverting any of these questions.
Right, right. Thank you, David. The only other thing I wanted to talk about was the housing bond, and after a lot of thought and conversations around it, at our last work session, that was the one that suggested we decrease that to five, in order to put, in addition to reducing the funding for the East Mesa Sports Facility, so that we can have $2 million dedicated to parks' maintenance, given that they do not have a dedicated funding source. However, after a lot of conversation, a lot of thought around, I always talk about municipal budgets, and generally government budgets being moral documents, and that they should represent the things, the people that you value most in your city, and perhaps even the greatest challenges that you are facing as a city. And the reality is that housing is, if not the greatest challenge we are facing, one of the top two. It is absolutely the greatest challenge, and COVID only intensified that for so many people who, two years ago, had stable housing, and now do not. We, there's an estimated shortage of 5,600 affordable housing units in the city. And so, for those folks who are here to speak against this, I would just urge you to listen, to just sit back and listen to the facts in front of us, instead of immediately retreating to this place that frankly villainizes unhoused folks, and just think about the impact that this kind of investment would have on our community, on young families, on seniors. And so, for that reason, Mayor, and of course, I'll let, you know, my colleagues speak before I do this, but I would like to move that we take an additional $1 million off of the East Mesa Sports Facility, and put it towards the $6 million that folks have been advocating for in affordable housing. But like I said, I'll of course let my colleagues speak before I make an amendment.
Well, you said you moved, so did you not?
No, I didn't. I didn't say I moved. I said, "I would like to..."
Okay.
I can, but I would like...
All right, I thought maybe I heard wrong.
No, I didn't say I moved.
Take the teat over. Just kidding. All right, all right. So, Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. So, David, Mr. Ware, thank you for your presentation. And as far as affordable housing, and going to Rose Garcia, who does a fantastic job at getting, making sure that people have homes, do you know the specifics? I don't, I really don't. So, this isn't just a question for you, it's before my edification. Do you know whether Rose Garcia contracts exclusively with HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Department of the United States?
Mayor?
Around a certain income? Is it limited to income? For example, a person, a person making, would a person making $90,000 a year be precluded from qualifying for a home which from qualifying for a home which costs maybe $300,000? And I don't know of other development areas in the city, forgive my ignorance, but I do know that in the West Mesa, excuse me, the East Mesa, homes are going for $300,000. Those are the quote "affordable" unquote housing units. So it's all relative. Do you know whether there's a restriction on, because you mentioned Tierra del Sol and Rose Garcia?
Mayor and Counselor Flores, I can give a general answer to most of those. I don't know specifics, but Natalie Green can help with our housing program. So the way the question is posed is that it would go to our Affordable Housing Project. The city has an Affordable Housing Ordinance, and they also have a Land, Make, and Trust Fund. And so those parameters would have to be followed for the designation of the money. My understanding of Tierra del Sol is that they look for as many funding sources as they can to address affordable housing. And so wherever those funds were achieved from, they would have to follow those parameters. HUD does have a definition of affordable housing, and if any of these funds from the GEO bond were put into that type of program, they would then be, would need to meet those requirements for...
So they would have to be within those requirements. So then my follow-up question to that would be, is there any other way to create affordable housing for people who, for example, just may fall outside of the parameters of HUD? Do you know?
I don't have the wherewithal to answer that question.
Okay, so then how are we going to get? Maybe Natalie hasn't... Seems like she's hesitating. My concern is that we're not going to be providing homes for people who have decent wages. I mean, I think $90,000 to $100,000 a year is a lot of money. You know, back in my day, that was like, my first job was $12,000 a year, and that was a lot of money in 1978, so. But today, it doesn't buy you a pack of bubble gum. So Natalie is, thank you so much for coming up to the podium. Do you know whether there are limitations insofar as earning capacity or actual earnings at the time of application for HUD funds?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Flores, for any HUD funding, the limitation is 80% of area median income, and I'll get you that number shortly. I asked staff to email it. These bonds, funds would follow our Affordable Housing Trust Fund guidelines. So as long as there was no federal funding, we could go up to 120% of area median income, and that's capped at the state level. And so for Las Cruces, it's around $60,000 for a family of four, but...
So it's capped at a very low amount for to qualify for HUD funds?
Correct.
That was what I suspected. So thank you, Ms. Green, very much, and thank you, Mr. Weir. So, Mr. Weir, my next question then is, does a GO bond, if we were to pass those $5 or $6 million, if we amend it, for housing, would we be limited to having it designated through an agency like HUD? I think you said maybe not, but you don't know for sure?
Any funding would go through the city's Affordable Housing Ordinance and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. There's a committee that reviews that, and the parameters for how they allocate that funding would have to be met.
I see. So that money that hopefully will pass with the voter, with the voters in the city would be subject, perhaps, to limitations as to how those funds are applied?
Correct. They would have to follow the city adopted parameters. The city has a whole series of partners that they've done affordable housing with and have even put out projects for someone to bid and partner with. So whether that be Tierra del Sol, other affordable housing providers, or other nonprofits in the community.
Have you seen any interest from our building community? I don't really see anybody from our building community in the audience but are attending this meeting. Do you know of any builders who would be interested in something like that? Maybe, you know, Macmillan and all that sort of those big...
Counselor Flores, I do not, I'm not aware of any specific project, but I know that the Home Builders Association does some fundraising for affordable housing and will do one home every year.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think they raffle it off or something at the end of the year, which is lovely, but there's more than one person per year that needs affordable housing. So that's affordable housing that I've been advocating for, and I thank the mayor for making the opening clarification that it's not for quote "homeless" unquote. It depends, of course, on how you define homeless. Homeless has been defined as someone who doesn't have a home to go to every night, someone who actually lives with a family, such as Dr. Johnson, Rodriguez Johnson mentioned, you know, 20 people under one roof. So it has a lot to do with exactly, you know, it means that, "I have a home." And it doesn't mean that you live in a tent. It doesn't mean that you necessarily live at Community of Hope, which is lovely and wonderful. But my goal, you know, I probably won't see it in my lifetime, is that everyone would have a home, because we all know that it enhances mental health, it enhances productivity, and it really generates economic development. So I hope that our city is able to. So wait a minute, so we are then going to be stuck with our ordinance regarding affordable housing, which may edge out, may not work for people who are earning enough money to maybe buy a house for $150,000 or maybe a little bit more, or a little bit less?
Mayor and Counselor Flores, the funds would be dedicated to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and so the parameters for the allocation of that would be what's in our ordinance.
Yeah, you've said that three times, because I asked it three times. It was intentional, folks. I do it on purpose, just in case.
I didn't trip up, did I?
No, you did not, David. You were consistent. Thank you, Mr. Weir, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Graham, and then Counselor Beta.
Thank you, Mayor. In case I forget after I'm done talking, I want to express my support for the suggestion that Counselor Ben Como made to shift a million from East Mesa Recreational Complex to provide the full $6 million for affordable housing. Suggested, not moved, but it's coming. Just in case I forget that procedural part. Mayor, I appreciate you mentioning the email traffic that we have been, that we've been receiving on specifically the Affordable Housing Bond question. And I think that you were very generous in your characterization of some of those emails, because I can say that some of the narratives that I experienced were disturbing, honestly disturbing. And I just want to get it out here and say that a lot of what I saw alluded to this notion that some people deserve help and other people don't deserve help. And I would like to say that everyone deserves help. Everyone deserves the support. And I know I'm going to turn to Ms. Green in a moment, if she'll join us at the podium again. And I like that we are explicating how broad affordable housing is and how many folks will be helped by affordable housing. But I just also feel compelled to say, there is no asterisk for me in affordable housing. It is for our unhoused residents, it is for our families, for our veterans, for our seniors. And I appreciate, I think we've seen bits and pieces already, both from the DIAs, from staff, and from those who have taken the time to come out and offer public comment, and I thank all of you, of how many kinds of people and families are helped by funding like this. But I was wondering if we could just get it, can we just get it all out here in one response or sentence? So if that, Ms. Green, is that, is that you, probably? Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Weir. So just a broad overview, who will this help?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Graham. Affordable housing, of course, is a varied continuum. So it is not only rental, it's single-family homeownership, similar to what Counselor Flores was requesting. Affordable housing is for working families, it's for seniors on fixed income, it's for families with children, veterans, first-time homebuyers, victims of domestic violence, retirees who are aging in place and need home rehabilitation. It can be for teachers, customer service workers, our retail workers. It can include land acquisition, construction, and development. It's also, of course, economic development. So anytime we have an affordable housing project, that funding is leveraged to bring in an additional millions of dollars into this city. And it's infrastructure, and many times it's infrastructure in areas of disinvestment across our city. I did want to note that I pulled the latest data this morning, and so in the Las Cruces area, it would take 1.5 full-time minimum wage jobs to afford a two-bedroom apartment at $800. And so that's, equates out to about 61 hours of minimum wage employment. And then I also wanted to cover that your average social security income payment is $841 in this area. So if you're paying an $800 two-bedroom a month rent, you got $41 at the end of the month.
Can you just, Natalie, repeat that really incredible statistic about minimum wage job and being able to afford, you said a two-bedroom rental?
A two-bedroom rental at $800, you would need to work 1.5 full-time minimum wage jobs. So that would equate out to 61 hours a week.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate that overview. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Counselor Beta, and then I'm going to ask Mayor Protam if she has a question. Counselor Beta?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, David. I was going to check if there was a potential reduction from the East Mesa complex. What is that, what is the final tally that we still need to finish off that project?
Mayor and Counselor Beta, I'm not real certain of that figure. If you give me a minute, I can look at the figures that were given to you on the 27th, or Mr. Trevino might be able to assist me.
Thank you, David. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Tony Trevino, for the record. Based on the last cost estimate done by ARC, the consultant with the recent inflation news, so close to, I believe, $22,000, $24,000 to complete the project, to meet the master plan. So that is kind of for about a quarter, maybe a little less than a quarter with $5 million being toward it for this GEO bond.
Okay, thank you. And with $5 million, will you be able to make at least some completed items within that complex?
So with the current work that we do now, we did kind of prepare a lot for the upcoming phase. So we've done a lot of the utilities and infrastructure. So I guess now what the team will do is go back and see, okay, with this $5 million, what fields can get done and completed? So we don't have fields that are halfway done. We actually can go and maybe do a baseball field or a soccer field and kind of see what we can get done and complete to improve that area the most beneficial way that we can with that limited funding.
Okay, thank you. And I think that stands to reason with all of the projects that people want to see a completion of whatever we do. And so I just wanted to check to see what we could do with that. So thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protam, did you have any comments or questions?
Mayor, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Counselor Correa?
Thank you, Mayor. I, my question was somewhat related to that. I think someone had mentioned that the lights are something that is outstanding and didn't get into the first East Mesa thing. So, Mr. Trevino, I think, I suspect that might be one of the things that's in that consideration for what could be done, but I understand that was one of the things that was part of that conversation. I also wanted to support Counselor Ben Como's suggestion, and I also, and I wanted to allude to and reaffirm what Counselor Graham said. My hope is, and I know that there are a lot of discussions about what occurs in all of our backyards. And I think, I live in District 5, which is often considered a particular type of district. And I would say, my hope is that with full support of affordable housing, we can really look to diversifying the places where affordable housing occurs. I know we have some great projects that are happening in District 5. I would like to offer up our collective backyard for places to identify sort of where affordable housing can go and really think about how we can broaden people's understanding and also give a better understanding of what it means to have diverse economic statuses in our own backyards, literally and figuratively. And so I urge us to consider that. And I support Counselor Ben Como's proposal to shift, to switch to 5 and 6. And I offer up District 5 as a place where I hope we can, I hope to see some of these affordable housing initiatives occur in our district. So that's what I wanted to offer up.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again, David. So apropos of Counselor Beta's question regarding the funding that would come through on this GO bond for the East Mesa, my question is, when we passed the GO bond, whenever it was, 2018, 2019? And that money was voted upon in a certain, whatever that amount was, was that the amount that was anticipated to develop the entire East Mesa complex? Or were there intervening circumstances such as the rising of prices, exponential rising of prices of materials such as lumber and stuff that has changed that? And so why are we voting on this again? And when would we expect to complete it? Would it be within the next four years with the additional money that might be raised?
Mayor and Counselor Flores, my understanding of the 2018 project was that a master plan was created, and there was always a realization that it would be constructed over time in multiple projects. They bid out the initial projects, and then as those were completed, then additional projects on the master plan would be targeted based on the funding that was available. But for specifics, I'd ask Mr. Trevino to answer your, or to assist with answering your question.
And then the follow-up to that would be, is that what we might be facing with affordable housing? But Mr. Trevino can answer the first question, thank you.
Hello again, Mayor, Counselor Flores, Tony Trevino, for the record. If you recall, in 2018, the question that went to the public was for the, was for specifically multi-use fields. It says multi-use fields in plural, eight pickleball courts, the baseball complexes, and that is what the $6 million or the, I believe, $6 million was based on. It was just for those certain fields that were on the question. Just to pull back where we dated, we'd had several public meetings to create a master plan. We knew that area was going to expand. So before we go and start building fields and put ourselves in a corner we can't expand correctly, we took a step back and then created that master plan to help us make these cost estimates move forward for the future funding. So the GEO bond from 2018 was just for those specific courts and fields that were called out, and that's where that cost came from.
So the GO bond that we will potentially, possibly, probably be voting on, does that money anticipate the completion? Or is it going to be awarded in a way that sets forth pretty much what was set forth four years ago?
Mayor, Counselor Flores, with this, I believe it goes down to $5 or $6, $5 million, I believe. It's just going to be a small portion of what it is to finish out the master plan. As Counselor Correa mentioned, the lighting. The lighting for those fields is going to be a huge chunk of that if we're going to move forward with the lighting first before additional fields. So it's just going to be working with the user department, Parks and Rec, and see how we move forward with that funding that we get for the bonding. But it's only going to be a small portion of it.
So, Mr. Trevino, I think what would be really helpful, and this goes to Mr. Peely as well as Mr. Nichols and Mr. Weir and Mr. Sevill, all of you who are crucial to...
Gracias.
Sorry. Making decisions are the omniscient ones in the, in our little circle here of city government. What, how, when will we see the East Mesa development be what we voted on four years ago? I mean, will we ever see it? Will it be another, four years coming after this, and then four years after that? I mean, I'll probably be dead by then, but, okay, I'm just wondering. And I, and I think that it would be very, very... And I, and I think that it would be very, very, very helpful to our community to let them know that, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day and neither was Las Cruces. So, you know, because I, I'm almost like a kid who can't wait for Christmas Eve or Christmas Day. And when we were working on that GO bond four years ago, I thought, oh, wonderful, we're going to have this wonderful, you know, these wonderful fields. And the soccer community was, you know, not happy with enough soccer fields. And now we have the pickleball people to deal with too. So I guess we just have to do more, disseminate more information as to the reality, the actuality of this long-term projects, and the same would probably go for affordable housing.
Mayor, Councilor Flores, Rome wasn't built in a day, but the projects that were voted on in 2018 will all be completed by December and maybe even extend to like February of 2023. So everything that was voted on, everything that was promised will be complete as promised and scheduled.
Okay.
So all the fields, everything is still the same.
Okay, great. And that's consistent with what was, what we voted on, on the ballot?
Yes.
However, the perception out there is very similar to mine. It's like, you know, we just can't wait till for Christmas to come, and it just sounded so good. And so we do, again, I'd like to emphasize that we have to communicate that reality to our constituents and to the folks here in Las Cruces. And to let them know that these are, these are really not baby steps, but certainly steps that have to be taken in order to achieve the end. And again, because, you know, people are saying, why do we have this on the, you know, why is it going out as a GO bond again? And the only saving grace for that is that fortunately taxes do not go up because of the obligations that end after a certain period. So, thank you again, Mr. Trevino, and thank you, Mr. Weir.
All right, so just a couple of things I wanted to make a comment about earlier. I think someone brought up, and it was a good point, whether or not we could have the verbiage saying the passage of this bond will not increase taxes. The reason why it didn't appear last time is because that wasn't true. Because that was the first time that the city had been able to successfully pass a bond in almost 50 years. So this will be the first time that if it was to move forward and pass, they would not raise taxes. But I think it's a good idea to check it out and to see. And Dave, if you wouldn't mind, I tried to come up with an example so members of the public or my colleagues could see how this would work. And personally, I think the wording should say Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I really do. To have it as just housing initiatives doesn't tie it down as much. But let me share with you what I'm envisioning this money's to be used for. So I took 100 units, and first let me just say, developers who deal, who work with affordable housing are a little bit different than other developers, okay? So they can have access to a little bit cheaper money in return for, they know that the rents aren't going to be market. So it's going to be a little bit less, so that's how they get a little bit lower interest rate. Okay, so what I did is I took 100 units, say built for $10 million, that's 100,000 a unit. And a lot of times when they have access to this funding, they can, they have to come up with 10% down, maybe sometimes 20%. And so I'm envisioning, this is where the city comes in, to come up with that 10% to basically grant to them. So if they have a $10 million project, they can build 100 units at $10 million, and they have $9 million from their investors, we come up with that million. So that's how we leverage this money. So in essence, under this scenario, we might be able to help build 600 units, each one. Each million would help with a 100-unit project. So I wanted to see if David or Natalie wanted to refute that. But I, in my opinion, that's what I'm envisioning this money is to be used for. And if so, I really think we need to say Affordable Housing Trust Fund specifically. That way there, the money, the public knows it's deposited in there, and then we can explain why, how we could use it. Now, we may be using more than 10%, might be using 20%. But I think for the most part, that's how we leverage the monies. I mean, if we were to build our own unit, our own facility, that's not enough to build a 10 million facility, right? So, and we're not in the business of owning them. We're here to help provide that startup for those developers so that they can have this type of housing that's available to the, to those at certain income levels and below. Those would be the NGOs that I see Cheryl Del Sol here, others that are, J.L. Gray does that. J.L. Gray has a tremendous amount of properties around the state, and they like to work with lower-income facilities.
Mr. Mayor, you are correct. That is how some of this funding could work. So for example, council allocated $2.4 million to the Three Sisters Apartments. It's a $17 million total development cost and will build 70 units of family housing near Hadley and Griggs.
Is that one near this middle school of Sierra, or?
It is south of there.
Okay, all right.
Mayor?
Thanks. So, you guess, Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. Who would determine or who would set the, put that language in the, on the ballot? The city clerk, the city attorney, the mayor, or the county clerk?
I would need to ask Jennifer or Christine if by having that verbiage change, if that's the will of the council. But I strongly believe that because if, because keep in mind, each one stands alone. It's very possible that if, if for some reason it's not clear and some opponents of this were to stretch the truth, it could get defeated and the others could pass. Right? These are standalone. It doesn't all have, all four do not have to pass for it to pass. Three could pass and one not pass, and then the amount's less. So I think to be on the, to err on caution, what's, you know, but this clarifies it. It's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and then the city can expand what that, how that's used.
I don't have any question about that being on the ballot. My question was, how does it get on the ballot?
So I was going to ask Jennifer or Christine, is that verbiage, can that be changed with an amendment today? If that's the will of the council?
Mayor and Council, I believe we can, it's a minor amendment. I think you could amend it here today.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask you a question? That you're wanting to explicitly say what's all right, what's the plan for this anyway? Is that, I just wanted clarification.
That's correct. Instead of it just saying Affordable Housing Initiatives, the whole, it was my understanding that council wanted to have this deposited because there is no actual building that we're going to build. Unlike the others, there is something that we're doing. But by putting it in the, by saying it's going into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it's, at least the public knows it's going in a special fund. It's not to be just used haphazardly, different form of housing. And I think this is the best way to leverage our monies because we have developers who are willing to do this, but they can't come up with, that's why the government gives them this rate. They give you 80%. They want them to come up with a little bit what they call skin in the game. They want somebody, whether it's the community, whether it's the city, county, we come up with it. And then that just opens up the doors for more affordable housing projects.
No, I understand. I just wanted clarification, David, right? That, that is what's happened, if this goes through with the voters, that is what would happen anyway, right? We're just, the mayor's suggestion is to explicitly say that in the question.
Mayor and Councilor Bencomo, the way I understand it, the mayor would request that the question be modified to say, I don't know the exact words, but basically that you'll fund affordable housing through the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So that would have to be inserted in the question today. You'd have to amend it, if I get the gist of what you're proposing, Mayor.
But that's what's going to happen anyway, right, is what I'm trying to get at, David? Whether that's in the question or not, that would happen.
That is my understanding.
You're specifically saying you want to fund affordable housing initiatives.
The instrument you already have on the books is your Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
I just didn't want to make sure that we're not somehow inherently changing the intention, but I don't think so. Thank you.
From a staff level, the intent was always to put it in that fund.
I think it's a great idea, okay.
And the reason why I say that, Councilor, is because even with our current bond that we just passed, I can't tell you how many times I go back and look at the actual question because there's people saying, well, you said, you promised this, this, and this, and it didn't appear on the ballot, didn't appear on the wording. And that's why I felt that this would be, I think it's a safeguard and to err on that safety. Councilor Abeta?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I agree as well for the change because I know that we have to be a little bit vague on some of these things because you don't want to limit yourself. But obviously, there's a high level of misinformation, especially with this question. And so I think being a little bit more specific with that language will help us at least be able to direct individuals that might have questions. We can point them directly to that trust fund and the stipulations with that. So thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, so let's turn to the members of the public now so they can speak. And let's see, a couple of people already spoke, but nonetheless, and I think you still have about a minute, Ms. Cruz. Chase, sorry. My eyes are failing me. Okay, so, yes, sir. You want to come forward, state your name? Four minutes today.
Cool. My name is Daniel Sanchez. I'm a community organizer with NM Cafe. Thank you for the podium, Mayor and Council. I just got back from Denver a few days ago and from my honeymoon vacation. I just got married, so that's pretty cool stuff. I've got to say it every chance I get because I'm excited. But when I got home, I had a letter from my landlord, right? And I remember like, heart beating. And I'm like, I opened it up, and I'm like, I kind of know what's coming. My rent went up. I'm lucky and I have a good landlord. My rent went up 50 bucks. It's manageable, right? But it started getting me thinking, why was I so scared? Why was I so worried? Because not everyone has that good landlord, right? And then it started getting me thinking about the other things. My landlord's not going to give me a letter, like when things with the housing market adjust or go down or whatever happens, right? They're not going to give me a letter like, hey, by the way, stuff's going, going good, so your rent's down. My rent stays up, period, right? Until I move out and then they adjust for the market and all that stuff, right? But like, my rent is what it is now. So what I ask is, I ask that you guys support for the full amount. And I am happy to hear that there's the suggestion to get the full $6 million. This is to help families, my family, other families in this community. It's important, and I care deeply about it, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Graham. Okay, that was First Row. Anyone on the Second Row? Second Row. Mary, okay.
Good afternoon. I'd just like to say thank you to Mayor Ken Miyagashima.
Excuse me, Mary, I need you to state your name, please.
I'm Mary Artinez White. I want to say thank you to you, Mr. Miyagashima, Mayor Miyagashima, Mayor Protam Gondala, city councilors and staff. You're all here in order to serve the public good, so thank you for the service to your community. It's not always an easy service to have to do. I am for addressing the issues of affordable housing. We know there's a housing crisis, and to make matters worse, the cost of homes has skyrocketed. We know we have high poverty rates, and things will only get worse if we kick the issue of housing down the road. In the hierarchy of needs, the first needs are food, water, clothing, and housing. Without those things, people can become desperate. And depending on how far down on the socio-economic spectrum you fall, that may cause other problems to arise, and people would do things they would not otherwise have to do. By ignoring the problem, we could cause more problems. So we need affordable housing to target different income brackets, like people with disabilities on fixed incomes, veterans, single parents, essential workers, students, millennials, so they don't fall further behind. And we cannot ignore the most vulnerable of our population, and that is folks with mental illness. So we ask you, city councilors, for the full $6 million. I do believe that it will go a long way in our community to keeping us strong as we weather some difficult times ahead. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, Jane?
Honorable Mayor, Councilwomen and Staff, my name is Jane Ash. I'm here also to talk about affordable housing and why it is so important to maximize the resources for this much-needed public good. I've spent my adult life serving the public education sector. For many years, I have delved deeply into the research of discovering the assets in the life of children that make them resilient as human beings and behave as responsible citizens and constructive members of the community. The research, the very abundant research, is very clear that when families have affordable, decent housing, sufficient food, and a good, basic level of healthcare services, including mental health services, children and community members flourish. Under these circumstances, adults in the family are better able to provide the support children need in becoming resilient in the face of great life challenges. In turn, families feel, feel a connection and a sense of responsibility for making their neighborhood and community a good place for everyone. The latest research also provides evidence that if the housing provides an opportunity for cross-class communication among socioeconomic groups, it raises the aspirational level for children in many instances to become successful adults in their career and family life. And we just had a wonderful story today from Elizabeth Rodriguez that demonstrates the value that having decent housing for her big family, made for her, and the very responsible citizen she became. Investing in one of these basic services, affordable housing, is far more economically efficient than later on investing many millions of dollars in programs to incarcerate hundreds of thousands of community members when they don't behave responsibly. For this reason, with a shortage of 5,600 affordable housing units in Las Cruces, I plead with each of you to go all the way to commit to dedicate a full $6 million in general obligation funds for affordable housing. Thank you all, Mayor, councilors, and city staff, for the tremendous effort and time you put in to serving the needs of the residents of our community.
Thank you, Jane.
Four minutes, good. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Rosa Morales, and I'm a resident of Las Cruces. I belong to various civic organizations, and I'm here to support a GO bond that includes $6 million for affordable housing. I'm a retired social worker with over 40 years of professional experience helping individuals, families, groups, and communities. I'm not going to be talking to you about some of the needs of all those individuals that I have helped in the past because I have said that before. I want to talk about something that has not been addressed and is very, very important. I decided to actually buy a house after three years because I would like to live here in Las Cruces. I have a property in El Paso. I'm a homeowner. But I decided to do that based on what's happening. One of the things that I decided, why I decided to do it is One of the things that I decided, why I decided to do it is through this process, I wanted to know what are the challenges that individuals face. Yes, I was approved by three banks. Yes, I have the money for the deposit. Yes, I'm interested. The problem is that there's not a unit that I'm interested in. I want a two-bedroom, two-bed condo that is less than 20 years old. My house in El Paso is 40 years old. I'm not interested in buying anything that is that old. I already have one. I don't want a three-bedroom, two-bed. I already have one. I want that specific. There's nothing anywhere here available. For three months, I have been shaking and shaking. Now I'm finding that San Antonio has some, Albuquerque has some, even Tucson, where I'm coming, they have some. Why is it that we don't have any here in Las Cruces? I want your actions to define your agenda and priorities. Let's start building environments where individuals and families can not only survive, but try and become contributors to our society. Like Elizabeth, yes, my first house, I bought it when I was recently married, 1980, brand new. And thank goodness, after my husband got cancer and he died, the family, myself and my child, we had a house. We still have to pay it for 30 years, but thank goodness, we have made that commitment and that decision allowed me to go to UCLA, get a master's, and be able to be contributor of society. I want that for everybody. Public investment needs to be centered around actual community needs, reflecting fairness, justice, and equitable values. The city must apply objective criteria to prioritize public investments. The public stated, first, they wanted affordable housing, they also wanted investments in the infrastructure of the community, and they also wanted parks, actually park improvements. Why is it that the city is not following it? Why is it that the city disproportionately is underfunded Districts 1, 2, 3, and 4? Why? Those are historic neighborhoods with residents that have been living there for many, many years. And therefore, they deserve, for all of you, right here, make decisions on their behalf. Yes, the majority of the houses that have been shown to me are in District 5 and District 6, not the new and the other communities. How can I go and live in those communities and contribute if there's no housing? So I want to thank you. I know it's a difficult decision, but I want to really thank especially those council members that today switched from $5 million for $6 million because this is an investment for the future of the city. And I hope to be able to live there, but only if there's housing available to buy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Councilwomen. I love saying that. I'm Reverend Carolyn Wilkins, and I've been a part of this Coalition for Affordable Housing. I want to thank you for actually stepping up to a higher level of a conversation today about increasing the level of funding to $6 million. As I've sat and listened to people and to the presentations, I believe this is a conversation of the heart and the head. From the standpoint of the thinking and the intellectual and what are the numbers that go with this, it was already stated that there's a shortage of 5,600 affordable rental units in this city. There are other statistics that go with it, that the median home price in Las Cruces increased 24% between 2019 and 2021. That doesn't account for the fact we're in 2022. And when I look, I don't have this as an official record, but as I look at what I paid last year and what the same type of housing is this year, it's increased another 10 to 15% on top of that. There's also a waitlist for housing services of two to six years. So when you look at it from a standpoint of how do we think about this? What are we going to do? How do we make a decision? I'm impressed and appreciative that you've upped the availability and actually looking at it as a trust fund. From the standpoint of the heart, I shudder when I hear messages of some people and those I shudder when I hear a conversation about affordable housing assuming that people are homeless. Because that really shows a disconnect between people's understanding of what things cost today, what a home costs to stay in, and what people are getting. I appreciate Natalie for mentioning that the average social security check is only $800. You can't live and eat in Las Cruces for much more than that. It's a difficult situation that we're in. So I invite you, you've already opened your heart to have that conversation, but also a home increases the physical and mental well-being of people, of children, of the elderly who have done their work and are coming here to live. And it also provides public health as an opportunity. So I say yes. I invite you all to continue to say yes, and I've heard a yes from each of you, almost. But I encourage you to vote yes for this GO bond and that it be at a $6 million level. Thank you for your continued service.
Okay, anybody else on that row? Father Jim.
Good afternoon. I'm Father Jim Lehman. You know, I was impressed with, first of all, with the discussion and the statistics that were out, and I wanted to sort of reiterate one of them. I think it was Natalie had said that, and the mayor repeated it, that an individual would have to work 60 hours a week to support a house. Imagine 60 hours a week doing, what, two, three part-time jobs? Because people don't hire you for a full-time job. So you're doing 20 hours here, 20 hours there. How do you manage all that? How do you enable to get someone to do that type of work? Because it's not possible. So we have many, many families out there who are just that far from a paycheck lost, someone gets sick, the rent goes up, suddenly the car breaks down, you know? So I get phone calls of saying, Father Jim, I need $50, I need $100. I can't pay my rent, I'm going to be homeless. So what this is, this is trying to take care of those people who are, fall through the cracks in many ways. They're working as hard as they can and they're trying to make a go of it. And I think we have an obligation with the affordable housing to help them in that process. So I applaud what you're doing. I think it's very important, but I think $800 for senior citizens, how do you get an apartment? I don't want to be sarcastic, but how do you get an apartment for $400, $600 when you're only bringing in $800? How do you afford that? How do you eat? You know, I know folks in town who don't have healthcare. I had a friend, I think it was twice in one year, had a raise in his rent and he had a week to decide whether or not he was going to move out. So that's what a lot of our people in the city are struggling with. Anyway, thank you very much. Any questions?
I don't think so. Thanks.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Monique Lopez, for the record, on behalf of Resilience Leaders, a 100% community here in Doñana. Mayor, councilwomen, good afternoon. I'm here today to speak in support of the Affordable Housing GO bond for the total of $6 million. I want to start by speaking on the goal of the Resilience Leaders, which is to reduce barriers to access surviving and thriving services, which will eliminate or reduce adverse childhood experiences. So I want to focus on the word surviving and thriving because there's a big difference and really you can't have one with the other. Because if you're focusing your day-to-day to survive, you're living in fight or flight, which makes it extremely difficult to thrive. If you don't have a home, a safe place to retreat each day, to rest and go on to the next day, then it's very difficult for you to keep moving. I feel that we all have a role in playing, we all have a role to play in making Doñana a community where our children and families can thrive. And today, city council, mayor, I believe your role is to vote yes, to vote yes, to give to your community and help them to not only survive, but to thrive. On behalf of myself, I have been in community behavioral health in this community now for 20 years. I started when I was 20 years old. I was a woman trying to just make it, right out of college, excited, I got my degree, and then I realized the harsh reality of life, which is you can have a degree, but that doesn't mean it's going to be comfortable. I got pregnant with my husband, we had our first child, and we fell within that income that didn't either, we didn't qualify, and we made just enough to survive. Found myself living in a community where I was terrified to raise my child in. I knew that if I kept him in that neighborhood, that there was more opportunity for him to get into situations. I felt myself every day trying to just make it and figure out a way to give my son a future. And it wasn't because there were services or systems put in place in this community that helped me get there, it was because I ran into two gentlemen who are the biggest blessings in my life, and they gave me an opportunity to move into an affordable unit. They put me through ESCRO, they believed in me, and they gave me a chance. And because they gave me a chance, I have now dedicated 20 years of my service to this community, helping those people that, I can't recall who said this, but it does also make me cringe, those people, those people who live in those homes. Those people have a heart, they have a story, and they deserve a chance. So I have dedicated my entire professional career to giving those people the chance that two gentlemen gave me, a woman who was just trying to work hard to raise her family. I feel that everyone on this panel, this podium today, has such a huge obligation and also privilege to say yes, to give, and to continue to help those people and help people like us to continue to give and help people in need. So I encourage everybody up here today and anyone behind me to rethink what those people are and just think of them as people who deserve a chance. And when we have a chance, we can thrive, not just survive. Thank you all so much for your time today.
Thank you. Okay, so that was third row, fourth row, anyone? If those of you who wish to speak, you're welcome to come closer to the front seats. Just kind of line up a little bit. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Art Marujo, Tiana de Sol Housing Corporation.
Excuse me, sir. Can you state your name, please?
Arturo, Art, Arthur Marujo. Spanish, short, and English. So I've been here before, in front of you all, and we were discussing the last, on how a developer works the deal. And I come from that side, as far as the development side, and those questions regarding the development. But what I wanted to address real quick, within this next first minute here, is the, I too have received emails because they know I work with Rose Garcia, we work closely, we attend so many meetings together, they see my face, I hand out my business cards. And I have received some pretty harsh emails. And I think what's happening here, first, it was low-income housing, was the term we used. Gave it a very derogatory term because they consider low income, as with hard-working families, to be, for the better part, bad people, right? So HUD came back and said, hey, let's call it affordable housing. But now that affordable housing has gotten into a little derogatory term because now they're associating affordable housing with bad people. So yes, there are incidents that happen in this city with all walks of life, not just homeless, there's others that happen. It happens in El Paso, it happens in Albuquerque, it happens everywhere. You can't fix the problem without first starting with solutions. And this is the right way to go. We have to start small and work ourselves big, right? So going forward, I've addressed some of those emails. And, you know, I've said some things to these people because I have to find a way to change their minds on how to look at it differently. If you have problems, come to us as a community. Come to my office, here's my address, come face me, we'll talk. Now, going forward on that, on the development side, I am so happy to see all the support for this affordable housing, but I am going to be honest with you, $6 million is still not enough to address what we need out there. That $6 million, like Mr. Mayor was saying here, $1 million for a project, you know, TDS or Community of Hope, we still have to come up with another $16 million, $15 million. So here we are, searching, chasing money from local banks, from HUD, from MFA. And the thing is that a nonprofit developer's world is completely different than a private developer. Private developer to go get their credit line, throw the cash down, get their land, build their houses, right? Nonprofit seems to be going through a lot more red tape than a private developer. We pay the same price for permits, yeah, we get a waiver or two, but that's about it. We pay the same impact fees, we pay everything the same, wood, materials, everything's the same for nonprofit. We get no discounts whatsoever. So that million dollars that goes to that 100 units, and we have to leverage another $15 million just to tackle that, that's one thing I want to show you guys, the big picture. You know, a lot of people are like, $6 million, that's a lot of money. No, it's not a lot of money. It's not. And as far as, Councilor Flores, I noticed earlier you had mentioned about that $90,000 salary person. You know, one thing that TDS has done, Tiana de Sol, is that we have met that requirement as low and moderate income per HUD guidelines, at 80%, like Natalie was suggesting, $60,000 for a family of four. We now have started reaching out to people making more than that because they are calling our office for help. They're searching for something they can afford, an affordable home under $200,000, which we do build, so.
I'm sorry, you're out of time.
All right. Anyone else want to give up their time? No, I'm just kidding. All right, then. Well, that's my soapbox there, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Art, Arthur.
Juan, do you want to speak? Just need you to state your name again, please.
Yes, my name is Juan Garcia, Mayor, Councilors. I'm not for or against this bond at this point in time, I'm just trying to understand what the end game is. Just real quick background, and the council reminded me of my childhood, where we were extremely poor. We didn't go to JCPenney's, we didn't go to Woolworth. Used to be a Woolworth back in those days. We used to go to Salvation Army to buy our clothes, you know, five cents, 10 cents, that kind of stuff. Those were our new clothes every year. But given that, today you're saying you need X amount of money. Let's assume that we have 20,000 people, just for the sake of discussion, that are with a low income that need affordable housing. Given the fact that material's going up, fuel's going up, food's going up, taxes are going up, utilities are going up, and I could go on down the list, why does it say that next year, you're not going to come back and say, oops, we need another $20 million, another $6 million for affordable housing for those same 20,000 that have been replaced by the other 20,000? What I'm trying to say here, there is no end to this. Until you get control of the utilities, of the food, of the cost that the landlords have to spend, because yes, landlords do spend money. In case you didn't realize it, it does cost money to maintain those apartments, those homes. Until you get a handle on that, you're just going to keep... Until you get a handle on that, you're just going to keep adding more fuel to the fire. And every year, you're going to come back and ask for the same thing over and over again. Nobody seems to understand this. I called the federal representatives, Cole Hindrich, the rest of the senators, they don't care. All they think is that they're going to send another $3 trillion down to the citizens, and everything's going to miraculously get fixed. We still have the same Wi-Fi problems, we still have the same road problems, transportation problems, poverty problems. So you think adding more money, throwing more money at this is going to fix it? I don't think so. Fix the root problem, fix the root cause, and then we won't have to worry about this. Thanks for your time.
Can I ask a question?
You want to ask him a question? Go ahead.
Mr. Garcia, thank you for your comments. So what is your solution? How do we proceed?
My solution is we get to the root cause. What is causing our inflation?
We know what the problem is.
Okay, so then let's fix it.
It's economics.
It's economics, you're right.
So when people have a home, they feel very secure about where they are. They're able to send their children to school, children thrive. Those children grow up with dreams, because they don't have the insecurity of where they're going to sleep that night. They grow up with dreams, and they think that, you know, they spread their wings, they go to university, they have jobs, and it just creates a different generation. So yes, it's true that it seems that it's unfathomable. It may be in your lifetime or mine, but we have to plant that seed, Mr. Garcia. And I know that your thoughts are in the right place, because we've had conversations along with Mr. Peely, and I know you have a good heart. And I think that when we understand that the root, and I've said this, and I think I said it to you, the root of all evil, they say, is money, but the root of all evil is no money. So in my humble opinion. And when we take what we can, it's like, I think you believe in tithing. We give that 10% of everything we have to those who are in need. And I think that that's how we're doing it. We're doing what we can with what we have. And do we expect a miracle within 10 years, say? Maybe it'll be a drop, but it's a start. And I think that when we have a community that cares, a community that's compassionate, we will create people who are productive and compassionate, and then it'll be passed on. So thank you for listening, Mr. Garcia, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so I think this other gentleman, yes, sir. Come forward. Just need you to state your name, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Paul Bryce. I'm a resident of Desert Hope. Yep, I'm one of them. I know Desert Hope has been a hot topic lately. I think enough has been said, so I will only say this. It would be unfortunate if additional funding for affordable housing was even slightly based on the performance of Desert Hope. The reason is, if Desert Hope was properly managed from the beginning, there would have been no need to bring in a third managed company to manage the property. And the truth is, as a few members of this board and members of the community have publicly voiced, the rising problems around the community didn't start overnight. It can be traced back to the revolving policy door of the courts, AKA the Bail Reform Act, which predates Desert Hope. The rising crime rate throughout the city should be kept separate from the rising number of unhoused in Las Cruces. It's no different than saying all cops are bad just because the few that are a problem gets focused on and can take the view of the whole police force down with them. The rising number of homeless and the need for affordable housing isn't isolated to Las Cruces, it's becoming a national crisis. Of course, we can't address these issues on a national level, but as a city, all the tools and mechanisms are there here in this town. From shelters to supportive services, to world-class hospitals, and everything in between to address physical and mental health care issues. The only thing missing is enough affordable housing to fit for the fixed income, low income, and even no income families and individuals that need a hand up. At the city level, this should be attainable. If Tennessee can be the volunteer state, then Las Cruces can be the helping hand city. Like most of us here, my siblings and I had chores growing up, yard work, housework, clean my room, things like that, before we could go outside and play. That is to say, we had to get our house in order before going outside. It taught us discipline and responsibility. Before writing this commentary, I had to look into a few things to get my facts straight. So when I came across a community input board, the one with the red dots and green dots and sticky notes, let's just say I was surprised. I can't believe pickleball is a bigger concern to the community than affordable housing is. Since this GOBON can only afford 2/3 of the projects requested, shouldn't we focus on getting our house in order before we go outside and play? Thank you.
Thank you. I think the gentleman with the hat came forward. Yeah, if you guys want to speak, you want to come closer to the chair, to the front, that'd be great.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for being here and hearing me out. My name is Zeke Rodriguez, I'm born and raised here in Las Cruces, New Mexico. I'm an Air Force veteran, I'm a small business owner. I'm actually here on behalf of the CCIA. I'm now presiding over the Crime and Local Politics Committee, and I'm also running for District 37 State Representative as a Republican. And I've been deeply involved with the School Board, County Commission, particularly the School Board. And just to begin what I'm about to say, that, you know, I just saw a study that came out that we're spending 28th most amount of money on our education, yet we're 51st in the nation. We're below, behind Puerto Rico. So there's obviously fraud, waste, and abuse, as we used to say in the Air Force, fraud, waste, and abuse in this type of government spending. So when this came to me, this $23 million, I right away raised some flags at me, because, particularly because I haven't heard, not from one individual here today, as to why we're in this position, okay? The lockdowns shut down the Third World. The Third World is solely dependent on the Second World and the First World. They serve the Second and the First World. So we shut down the First World, the Second World countries, the Third World. Millions have died, and now they're all coming up here because we have unsecure borders, and they have nowhere to go, they have nothing to do. They're starving to death. Either they come here, or they starve to death. So that's what we're dealing with right now. The homelessness has gotten tremendously worse. And then let's go back to the rise of cost of living, that's inflation. During COVID, we printed out trillions and trillions of dollars, most of which didn't even come to America, went overseas. And so because we did print so much money, we're dealing with hyperinflation, and it's not going to get any better. It's not going to get any better. So not only are we not addressing the issue that caused this, but we're not even planning for what's going to come, because what we're dealing with right now is very minute compared to what we will be dealing with a year from today. Mark my words, let's talk a year from today, and let's see how bad the inflation is going to be. So I think that, of course, I was very poor growing up. I grew up in a dirt trailer park down the street. It's not even there anymore. Okay, so I am very considerate to coming from nothing and pulling yourself up and working your butt off to succeed and teaching children the right way to be a positive American citizen. So it's not about that, it's really just about being logical and reasonable. We haven't addressed the real issues of why we're in this position in the first place. Why are we dealing with high cost of living? Why is our economy suffering? How big of an impact was it to lockdowns? How can we counter the hyperinflation that we're incurring right now that we will continue to incur? Okay, none of those are being addressed before we spend $23 million on something that could be just, it looks like it's just going to be a Band-Aid. It's just going to be a Band-Aid for another bigger problem that's coming, because we're not going to the root core of the problem. So I hope that City Council, the mayor, consider what I'm saying with today, and the people in the public consider what I'm saying today. We will be investigating this thoroughly, we will be pushing this very hard. It's not like we don't want to help people who are misfortune, unfortunate. It's not the case at all. In fact, we want to empower people so they can be self-sufficient, because that's what America's founded on, is being self-sufficient and contributing citizens. It's just that we don't, we want to get away from any more further fraud, waste, and abuse, and we want to address the core issue and protect our citizens to deal with what's coming our way in the near future, which is going to be a lot worse than what we're dealing with right now. Thank you all so much, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. So Senator, I just need you to state your name, please.
Sure thing, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, honorable councilpeople, women. My name is Carrie Hamblin, and although I have the honor of wearing many hats, today I am here in my capacity as CEO and President of the Las Cruces Green Chamber of Commerce. I also have the honor of serving as Senator for District 38, and for four years, I was the President of the Board of Directors for the Mississauga Valley Community of Hope. So it should be no surprise that I am here today to talk about housing as a fundamental right for every resident of our state. We are all one catastrophic event away from losing our homes. And I'd like us to think about our homes that we have, given that I was planning on two minutes, but now that we have four. But I'm thinking about the lovely home that I share with my wife in an incredible neighborhood, and how we are both very privileged and fortunate to be able to have incomes, dual incomes, in our house, to be able to afford our utilities, to be able to afford the food that we are able to share with our community. And so when we talk about housing as a right, something that everybody deserves, we have to recognize, and I know that you know this, is that we are experiencing a housing crisis, and that Las Cruces is not immune to that, and that we are seeing this all over the country. And if anybody has been looking to either rent an apartment or home, or is even in the fortunate position of buying a home right now, we know, that has been mentioned a couple of times already, that rent is going up. The median list home price was up more than 20% from last year. I know there's a house in my community that's not any bigger than my house that is already being sold, trying to be sold for $230,000. That is beyond the reach of most people in Las Cruces. And we can go into a whole nother conversation about people coming from outside of Las Cruces, buying homes, flipping them for a profit, and not even allowing that for people who live here. So as we continue to move our way out of the pandemic, we also know that local wages are not keeping up with the spike in housing and rental costs. And because of your work and the work of so many nonprofits and agencies, we get to boast about how Las Cruces is an inclusive community, recognized for its cultural diversity, for its generosity in helping those in need, and providing experiences and events that add to our vibrant quality of life. But what we are seeing hotly debated in our community right now are the results of a housing crisis, but also a pandemic. People losing their jobs, a lack of mental health services. You know the list, it's much longer than what I'm talking about right now. But I can tell you, if you want to address job loss, physical and mental health issues, drug and alcohol issues, you have to get folks into their own homes first before they have the secure foundation to tackle any of those issues. And we had mentioned earlier, there was a mention of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And we know that there is a shortage of 5,600 affordable rental units with two- to six-year wait on housing services. We know that folks are struggling to make ends meet, to pay their bills and to put food on their tables. However, I think we all can agree that we need policies and funding decisions to help keep housing within the reach of our local workforce, our young people, our seniors, and our veterans on fixed incomes, as well as our growing families. This last legislative session, now I'm putting on my senator hat, we expanded affordable housing by providing a dedicated funding stream to the New Mexico Housing Trust Fund. And today, you have a chance to dedicate funds to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund by investing $6 million of the 2023 general obligation bonds. And there are a number of areas that are going to benefit from this. When we focus on building affordable housing, our economy will be positively affected by local jobs that are created during construction phase. Homeownership opportunities give families a chance at building wealth, putting money back into our economy, because they can actually spend money on items and services that are not part of addressing their basic needs. And lastly, when we start dedicating money toward housing and allowing every single resident to have housing, and please note that I say resident, we are removing historical barriers to equitable housing options and economic opportunities for communities of color. I thank you for your consideration in this. I thank you for your consideration of $6 million, because you know, as well as everybody else here, that our community will be better off for it. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council.
Ma'am, did you want to speak? Looks like you came. Just need you to state your name, please.
I'm Linda Ruth Martinez Adams. I'm with the American Legion Auxiliary, and I'm the Public Relations Chairperson. Mayor and city council members, food and shelter are basic needs for all of us. The American Legion Auxiliary supports the proposal to appropriating another million to add to the parent proposed $5 million at the general obligation bond. Please vote to amend the $6 million for affordable housing, which includes all veterans, military, and their family. As an end, I was a 22-year-old woman who got her first home through FHA. It is so important that we help our young people, our veterans, and our seniors. At age 70, I still own a home, so please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, so let's, yes.
Good afternoon, Carrie Bachman with Doñana Communities United. Thanks for having this conversation. I think it's really important, and I appreciate all the work that the city is doing and the consideration they're taking on this issue. I just want to say, I've been a bit disturbed by, and I think several councilors and members of the public have alluded to this, this distinction between different types of housing that we have in our community. And this is sort of an unspoken thing, I think, at this meeting. And I just want to say, the work that we do as an organization and the work that many of you all and all of us do is not about, like, continuing to build walls between what we think of as different groups of people, people who may be, like, educated, or people who may know what needs to happen. Like, our community, all of our community members have gifts and assets. And for example, Mr. Rice, who had the courage to come up here and speak, I just really think we need more voices from community members who are currently experiencing challenges, housing insecurity being one of those. What is the process going to be? How this money is going to be allocated? What types of projects are going to be done? Whose voices are going to be heard? And I don't just mean in focus groups or in, you know, let's put up Post-Its on a board, but engaged in long-term conversation so that these issues are actually not just those of us who are professionals or community members who are privileged, and I count myself as one of them, but people who are experiencing challenges currently. These are the voices we need to hear. We are not a community about charity, about giving a hand up. We should be a community about engaging the gifts and experiences and knowledge of all of us. And I have more to learn from community members who are currently unhoused than they have to learn from me. And I just feel like the conversation that we keep hearing is very much one of, how are we going to help them? And maybe "them" is seen by some as a derogatory group, or by others as, this is a group we need to help. But really, that's a false dichotomy to begin with. And I just, I just feel really strongly that the whole nature of the way we talk about these issues needs to change in our community. If people are interested in engaging in a real way with community members, that's what we need to do. We can't just be saying, what are the problems at Desert Hope? And disparaging a whole intention that is so founded in, yes, this is going to work, and yes, this can work. When we get the right management in place, these things work. But what I also would like to say is, creating ghettos or creating places where people go to live and be dealt with because they have issues that I personally don't have or don't want to deal with, that is not a positive way of approaching change in our community. And if we continue thinking about, there are these people who need affordable housing, there are these people who need permanent supportive housing, like, that is just continuing to divide us all. So this is a bigger conversation than I can have right now with you all, but I just want you to know, there are a lot of people in our community who really want to build these bridges, people from all walks of life. And it is possible to do, but we have to actually spend the time and actually invest in relationships. It's not just a question of money and what we're going to throw at it and what we can get from leveraging from other places. We've got to build these relationships. And I know you all are good people, and you all are good people here, and the people in our community are good people. But when we continue to use the language of self-sufficiency, of, we don't want that in our neighborhood, that's not creating the community that's going to make this kind of thing work. So I apologize for being a little passionate. I just want to thank Mississauga Valley Community of Hope for all the good work that they're doing, and the city for continuing to look at these issues and the root causes, which are what we need to look at, one of them being social isolation and disconnection. Thank you.
You know, Carrie, thank you for your comments. And I agree with what you have to say, but let me just share this with you. You know, I've been in the political arena for over 30 years. I've been in 14 elections. I've seen things, I've heard things, I've seen things so distorted that you wouldn't believe. And I started out a lot like you, when I first ran for office, and quickly learned that... quickly learned that you can't do that. The goal is, is to get this passed, to let the public know what it's really used for and the best that we can do. And I think what you, what you have to say is perfect, and I think those conversations need to be had after, while the process is going on. But I think what I'm trying to tell you is, like, for example, when I said, I think we need to specifically put Housing Trust Fund, there are going to be people who are against this, and they're going to say things, they're going to print things, they're going to do so many things to try to torpedo it. And, and that's why it's important that, that I think, that the public understands what it's being used for, why it's being used for. I mean, you make a lot of good points, and I'm not saying that you were pointing fingers at any particular state council member, but I just wanted to share that with you, that what you have to say, I think, is great, but I think the whole goal is to get this passed. And, and, you know, politics is a tough business, and there's people who don't want things to happen for the betterment of all. You would think so. You know, earlier, one of my colleagues, I think it was Counselor Ben Como, said about, you know, when I said, yeah, I got some emails, and, yeah, there are some that, that, boy, I tell you, you know, it, my skin's pretty thick, but there's times where, you know, you just want to tell them to go fly a kite, but you know, you don't. You know, you just let it go, and nonetheless, that's about it. But anyways, I just wanted to share that with you. I appreciate all the years that you have been advocating for compassion and being able to have everyone get together, put things together, but I just wanted to just let you know that I think sometimes when we do things, that I think there's a, our heart isn't in the right place, but there's just, we're trying to get something passed. I mean, it's one thing to get something with my seven colleagues, my six colleagues and I, but we have, you know, we have 100,000 residents that, I don't think they all can vote, because they're not all registered, but, you know, we have to let them know what it's used for. This is their money, and we need to be as close and specific as possible, so.
May I respond, Mr. Mayor?
I beg your pardon?
May I respond?
Sure, of course.
Thank you very much. I'm not at all suggesting that this money should not be allocated. In fact, I'm probably one of the strongest proponents for allocation of $6 million and more for affordable housing. And in fact, I would argue, Mr. Mayor, that I am one of the people who actually wants to know how this money is going to be spent, and how the decisions will be made as to how the money is spent. I understand that's not what we're here to do today, but I think we need to remind ourselves that the ability and the desire to actually design a process which is fully inclusive, which is not just rubber stamping, or not just the voices that we always hear, is part of the role of this council, this government, and all of us in our community. That is not a sidelight. That is the core of who we need to be as individuals and as a community working together for the future. If we are not really respectful and inclusive from the very beginning, then any process that we undertake is going to fail. So I would respectfully add as well that I, and many people working in our community for decades, have a lot of experience, which is also very important here, because perhaps we have not been elected officials, or we have not worked in government. So I would just like to add that the perspectives of those of us on the outside deserve to be heard, and not just in public comment periods, but in actual, real consultation, ongoing consultation with those who are making policy. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much, Carrie. Thank you for your comments. Thank you so much. I do want you to know, however, that we do have a Housing Policy Review Committee, which is open to the world, not just our residents in the city of Las Cruces, but any human being who wishes to attend. The committee is chaired by Counselor Ben Como, and we meet some, I don't remember, Counselor Ben Como, when does our Housing Policy Review Committee meet?
Third Wednesday.
It meets the third Wednesday of every month.
Back then?
I thought it was two.
Maybe, yes, two.
Two, yeah, and the reason I have to ask is because we vary, we all sit on Policy Review Committees, and meetings get changed for this reason or that reason. And all of that is posted in our community, in our website. People have complained that it's difficult to follow, but in reality, well, you just, you have to really go here, go there, and hopefully, one day, we'll have a website that's, that's very easy to access. But if you have time, Carrie, and I know that our ever-faithful resident, Greg Shervanik, I think he just walked in, maybe he walked out, where are you, Greg? Anyway, Greg shows up to most of the Policy Review Committees. And in that committee, I know Nicole Martinez participates, a lot of people in the community participate, and you are most welcome to go to that. Natalie Green is pretty much the person in charge of housing insofar as HUD money, HUD money goes, and that sort of stuff. And it used to be, she used to be housed in the Community Development Department, but, you know, I'm not privy to those decisions. She's now in the Economic Development Department, and I would say that the reason she's been shifted is because people recognize that housing has everything to do with our economic development, insofar as, as you pointed out, the security that people have. So I don't, you know, Carrie, you know just about everything, so I don't understand why you didn't know that we have a Housing Policy Review Committee. That's where we set policy, and we take input from, from the community.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Flores. And in fact, I'm very aware of all of our review committees, and that's, I think, it's wonderful that the city has put those into place and continues to work to see how those, you know, can best be useful. What I am suggesting is perhaps a slightly different perspective in terms of when projects are planned and identified, specific projects, how can community members be actively engaged in development of those projects? So, so I understand certainly a review committee looks at all policies in the city.
Well, this is the way it works, and you know about Elevate Las Cruces, you were active in that. We all worked together over several years in putting the policies together, and it's come to fruition. It's actually, we've adopted it, and the provisions in Elevate Las Cruces have to be, everything we do up here has to be consistent, or anything the city does has to be consistent with Elevate Las Cruces, because it's all, it's all, there's references to the sections that supports whatever we're doing. And then, I believe that the city, Mr. Nichols is here, as is Mr. Weir, I think that different things are posted. Now, what we do as city council, and I really appreciate your comment, and I think that's why I became a city councilor, because it just seemed like a big, there was, "El dicho ha hecho, había un gran estrecho." So whatever was being said, and whatever was being done, was a huge, what's the word in English? I don't know. A big chasm, chasm, I don't know how to pronounce that word, C-H-A-S-M. So, and being here, I've learned that, one thing I've learned is that government, government moves slower than molasses on a cold day in January. So, and that's why I ask questions about, well, if we do it now, how long will it be before we actually see the actualization, we see the actualization of whatever we're proposing? It works slowly. We don't get into the nitty-gritty. I don't interfere with what Mr. Weir does, I don't interfere with what Mr. Nichols does. If I have a question specific, or germane to a question a resident has, of course, but we work directly, the city council goes to Mr. Peely. So, and everything is set forth in our city charter, what our, what our duties are, what our parameters are, and the parameters are limitations necessarily. So, but I do have to speak on behalf of the city council, and that includes the mayor, that we work very hard at not telling, we can't, we can't be telling department heads what to do, but we can communicate what we would like done. And, and I, and that comes through the Policy Review Committees, because that's what we do. We set policy. We don't do the, we don't, we don't get into the weeds. We'd like to pull some of those weeds, but we can't get into them. So, I felt, Carrie, frankly, that, you know, there's a frustration in terms of communication. And I want you to know that I, for one, and I can speak for my, for the mayor, and city councillors, and Mr. Peely, we're here. So if you have any questions, or if you'd like to sit down and meet with any, not more than three of us, but be more than happy to meet with you, and your input has been highly appreciated by me. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so getting back to, there was two items that were discussed from, oh, Rick?
Sure.
Yeah. Just need to state your name again.
Richard Renault. Just a couple things on the hierarchy of needs. Housing, wouldn't, the worst thing you can do to a drug addict is give him a free house. Wouldn't a hierarchy of needs be, get off drugs, clean yourself out? So that's, that's the way I see that. Now, those people, those people over there, I'm talking about the residents who banded together, who signed petitions, who put a one-hour video together. Where's the compassion for them? I watched the video, I heard powder keg twice. Is that compassion? Powder keg, from the residents, from those people, I'm talking about the residents. And this fellow that was here, he is a model for what should be in a subsidized housing, someone that wants to help himself. There are homeless people that are complaining about Desert Hope. There are homeless people complaining. So where's the compassion? When is the city going to give funds to the dollar store? We know that residents near Desert Hope are saying, I don't go there anymore. I work across the street from that dollar store. Now she's going to our district, Yvonne, because it's safer. So, that's all I have to say.
Point of personal privilege.
I'm sorry.
Point of personal privilege to reference standard rules of procedure.
Yes, Counselor.
Thank you. I'd like to remind that we do have on Section 3.0, Debate and Decorum, we have in Section 6, any person making disrespectful or degrading comments with this. We do have an individual who has referenced council members with personal names. I know that we have, in the past, asked a gentleman to remain respectful, and I am asking for that to be done with my colleagues.
Okay. All right, so.
Was that for me?
You're, you're.
Was that for me, or?
I don't know. You're finished speaking?
No, the worst name that I'll call you guys, Yvonne, is goofball. I can, I'll call you guys goofballs, so, anyway, thanks.
Okay. I don't know, I didn't quite hear. Okay, so do me a favor, Dave, can you put back the actual, do you have a slide that has the actual verbiage that would be going on the ballot?
Yes. Slide 6 is the language for the fire station.
Okay.
Slide 7 is for the East Mesa Recreation Complex. Slide 8 is the one that you've talked about the most today. And staff is conferred with the Finance Department and our Bond Council, and has some recommended language to present to you in regards to this question. And then the slide 9 is the one for the Parks and Recreation Facilities question.
Okay, so getting back to the affordable housing question, that's one where I think Counselor Ben Como was going to make an amendment to go to $6 million there, and then, and then also drop the East Mesa Complex from $6 million to $5 million, so that's where they make up the difference.
Right.
And then, so maybe let's do that one first, and then discuss whether they want to change, or somehow insert the word Affordable Housing Trust Fund. For example, the amount to be placed in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, da-da-da, to provide resources to plan, design, or, yeah.
So that would be two amendments.
I'm sorry, Counselor Graham has the floor.
No, I said, we're ready. The technical editor, me, came out, and we're ready with the amendment.
Okay, but.
Mayor, does it need to be two? It can't be in one amendment?
Can you make two amendments?
No, can it just be one amendment?
For the whole thing? That's up to the boss over here.
We need to make two, at least one, we can change the numbering and the wording for that one question, and then the other amendment to change the amount for that question.
I knew that's what she was going to say.
Wait, I'm sorry, I need to make, so there's three total amendments?
You can make two amendments. You can change the East Mesa Public Rec. to $5 million, and that's one amendment. And then for the second amendment, you can change the question regarding the affordable housing to $6 million plus add the additional wording.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution for question number two, to reduce the total to $5 million.
Question number two to the East Mesa Complex.
Correct.
Okay, so let's, all right. It's been moved by Counselor Ben Como, seconded by Counselor Flores. Any questions from council on this issue? Christine?
This is on the motion to amend Resolution 23-015 to reduce the amount in the second question to $5 million. Counselor Abada. Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Como?
Yes.
Counselor Carron?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Gandara?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. I was wondering if she was still with us. Okay, Counselor Ben Como.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make another motion to amend the resolution to change question number three to increase the total amount to $6 million, and include additional language that will specify the money will be deployed through the Affordable Housing Land Trust. Can I? Just put that at the end. That's what I said.
Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Affordable Housing Land Trust. Or is that wrong? No, that's right.
Mayor and Council, if I may just clarify for the city clerk, so that she, can I read it as I think we should?
Oh, yes.
So, the question would read, shall the city of Las Cruces issue general obligation bonds payable from property taxes in amount up to $6 million, and placed into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to provide resources to plan, design, construct, acquire, and preserve housing, affordable for low-to-moderate income households, including acquisition of necessary land?
Thank you. I move to amend to that language.
Okay.
Second, Graham?
Motion made by Counselor Ben Como, seconded by Counselor Graham, to amend the question number three, to, that was discussed by the city attorney on record. Christine, is that good?
Yes, because I actually have it written down with her, so we're good. Okay, so this is on the motion to amend question number three with the wording that the city attorney just read. Counselor Abada?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Como?
Yes.
Counselor Carron?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Gandara?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Okay, now we're on the main motion.
Mayor, I'm sorry, may I?
Yes, Mayor Portem.
I thought we were going to add language that indicated it would not raise the citizenry taxes.
Oh, I think that's more of a question that Christine was going to work or investigate, to see if that could be added, and presume if it can, then I would presume it would be added somewhere.
Yes, Mayor, Counselor Gandara, I'm going to get with the county clerk.
Yes, Mayor, councillor Gandara. I'm going to get with the county clerk's office this week and see if it's just some wording we can put on the ballot. It's not necessarily regarding the questions.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Okay. Okay, next item, 7.2.
Oh, mayor, we need to do the final vote.
That's right, we didn't. Sorry about that.
This is on the motion to approve resolution 23-015 as amended. Councillor Abada?
Yes.
Oh, hold on.
I'm sorry, mayor and councillors, we need to have some clarification and maybe add, I'm sorry, another, have another amendment because of the possible restrictions on the use of the fund. And I can, we can have our bond counsel explain that so that we don't want to restrict the funds. So we'll have bond counsel explain exactly why that is.
Good afternoon, mayor and councillors. I'm Catherine McKinney, and I work with the city as your bond counsel. My suggestion was to include language that provides that the, the introductory language, "Shall the City of Las Cruces issue general obligation bonds payable from property taxes in an amount up to $6 million to provide resources to plan, design, construct, acquire, and preserve housing affordable to low- and moderate-income households in conjunction with the city's Affordable Housing Land Bank and Trust Fund, including acquisition of necessary land." My concern is I'm not sure of all the restrictions on the use of the trust fund and if it's consistent with use of geo-bond proceeds.
So the, the substance of that is in conjunction with?
Correct.
Okay, I understand. I don't, but I don't exactly understand how I would amend the amendment that we just voted on. Do I just say, I propose we amend it again to reflect the language that our geo-bond counsel suggests, just suggested? So...
Let me, let me see if I can understand this correctly. So I think we, and I think I know where, what you're saying is because unlike the others, there's a specific item that the public is building with the money. There's no specific item that we're building with this. Is that what your concern is?
I guess my concern is, when we're, I'm kind of drafting on the fly and I'm not as familiar with the, all the uses of the trust fund and if there are requirements for spending the trust fund on certain things that would not be consistent with the use of geo-bond proceeds, then we could get ourselves into a bind. So I was trying to provide the construct in conjunction with your Affordable Housing Land Bank and Trust Fund, but not necessarily constricted to the actual application of funds that flow into that trust fund.
So I guess my question would be, and this would probably be for Jennifer or yourself, but to, on that particular question, it would be contingent on, because we have probably two more weeks if needed to correct it. Is that correct? Is that, am I understanding? I thought we could go all the way to the 15th. So obviously, this would be contingent on, on its purpose, and then that gives staff and yourself time to realize if that's something or if there has to be some other verbiage that needs to be done. I think the spirit and the intent of council is what is, you know, is what we're trying to convey to the public. And I think as long as we know that it's, that's not the exact verbiage that we're going to be using based on, on what you all find out, then we may have to change it.
Mr. Mayor?
Is that good? Yes, councillor.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the information analysis on that. So if you find that we can't use the language because it's, it's not consistent with GO-bond monies, would you be able to come up with something akin to that? That the intent of the use?
Sure. Mayor and councillor Flores, I, we could provide several alternatives. I think if we find that the more narrow language of depositing into the trust fund would not work, we can provide several alternatives.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Councillor Bencomo, you have a question?
I, so I was just going to say we're going to keep it as currently is.
Okay, great.
Yeah, please. No, no, we're good.
Very good, yes. Now I'll do the recall for the main question. Okay, so this is for approval of resolution 23-015 as amended. Councillor Abada?
Yes.
Councillor Graham?
Yes.
Councillor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councillor Carran?
Yes.
Councillor Flores?
Yes.
Councillor Gandara?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Okay, item 7.2, resolution 23-016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Bencomo, seconded by councillor Abada. I believe Adrienne Widmer will be discussing.
Oh, thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, council, thank you very much. Adrienne Widmer, Assistant Utilities Director. Thank you very much for allowing us to bring this to you.
Adrienne, can you move the, kind of toward, there you go. Thank you.
Is that better? Thank you. This is on the Pasquale Rodriguez Jr. Griggs Walnut Superfund Site Treatment Facility, the renaming that we would like to do. To give you a little bit of background, in 2003, Pasquale was promoted to the water production operator, and through that, he assisted in maintaining wells 18 and 27 to make sure that the PCE plume would not move out of position as the city and county were negotiating with NBD and EPA prior to and after being designated a superfund site. Pasquale was promoted to the Water Production Projects Coordinator in 2012, which was four months prior to the official ribbon cutting of the treatment facility. With his promotion, he was designated as the operator directly responsible for the operations and maintenance of the treatment facility. In 2016, when he was promoted to water production supervisor, he continued to oversee the operation and maintenance of the facility and wells. Pasquale and his staff were designated essential employees and worked through COVID, through the COVID pandemic, making sure the facility and wells continued to operate to meet the requirements of the consent decree. Through his leadership and mentorship, his team has been able to continue to operate and maintain the facility and both wells in an efficient and professional manner. Here's a picture here, and just to kind of let you all know, Mr. Rodriguez is one of the unknown stars that worked diligently without being noticed by the general public to provide exemplary service without a lot of fanfare. And we believe it appropriate to request this naming based on merit to the community by a devoted and loyal employee. And so, just so that you know, he's, he's like sitting right there with his trademark hat. And so thank you all very much for considering this. Thank you.
So it's pretty hard to vote no with him sitting here. I'm just kidding, Pasquale. Okay, well, good. Any questions?
I, I just wanted to give a quick comment. When we got onboarded as new public health, or new city councillors, we got to tour a lot of places, including the, the Griggs Walnut site. And for me, it was an extraordinary highlight as a public health person, understanding and seeing how our city is really thinking about the integrity of our water and sort of participating in this really huge effort to address something that, a prob, an inherited problem. And I, I just thought the science of it was really cool, and so I feel really grateful to have seen that and to know now that you're, that we're going to name it after you. I feel really privileged. So I'm really glad to, to vote yes when the time comes.
So Pasquale, I have to admit, when this first happened early, I don't know, 2006, 2007, I can't remember exactly when, you know, it was a big deal. We were really worried about it. And nonetheless, Dr. Garcia and his team, they felt confident they were going to take care of it. So there you go. So you were the one who took care of it, and you did a great job. We were able to work with EPA, which, you know, is kind of scary sometimes. You know, they can, they could really take us around the block if they wanted to. But nonetheless, the city and the county had a game plan, and obviously you were very instrumental. I will say, this is probably the first time I've seen the county reach out first and, and do this. So that tells, it says a lot about you. So congratulations, and thank you for your service to the city and to the community as a whole.
Thank you.
Okay, well, if there's nothing further, Christine?
This is on the motion to approve resolution 23-016. Councillor Abada?
Yes.
Councillor Graham?
Yes.
Councillor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councillor Carran?
Yes.
Councillor Flores?
Yes.
Councillor Gandara?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We will invite you to the September 1st. We're going to have the 10-year kind of get-together over there, so please come to that. Thank you.
Okay, next item, resolution 23-017. Need motion second?
Second.
Motion made by councillor Flores, seconded by councillor Abada. So if you see, I'm going to be kind of speaking on this. So if you see that a while back, when councillor, when Judge Goldbaum was elected, there was actually another position that hadn't been filled. And, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, but I know that, I know the workload has been increasing. I think at one time she asked for additional help. We have been using some temporary judges, but they've been working pretty much around, the, not the clock, but they've been working around the week. And so we felt that to help alleviate that concern to point, and, and I asked him, because we were having a hard time trying to figure out who could do this. So Corinne Ryan was the former judge. He went into retirement, and I think he said he'd be willing to come out of retirement, you know, temporarily to, to fill this, to help the city's workload. So I'd like to appoint Corinne Ryan to the second position, municipal judge two. I know it's been moved in second. Do you guys have any questions?
I just have a quick question. So I guess I really want, don't, I mean, I've read the charter and I've read the, the role of the municipal court. I do have some questions. I, I don't, this is a paid position, and I don't really, I, I would, I would just like to state for the record, I would prefer that we use a screening process to open an opportunity up to folks and then see who is up for it and make the best decision based on those applicants. So, so I just would say, out of naivete, I feel like that's how we should approach paid positions. And I, I'm a little bit discomfited by appointing someone without, without knowing anything about their background or experience. And I understand that he did it before, but I think it's really important that we're transparent when we make appointments about, especially to paid positions. So I just want to express my discomfort, good discomfort.
No, I appreciate that, councillor Carran. And I have to tell you, there's very few things that the charter gives me, and this is one of the few things, there's like three things. One is my opportunity to make a policy. Of course, you all have to support it. And the second is, is to appoint judges. And so, and it's, it's, I have to have your consent, but it's my, I get to appoint them. So I hear what you're saying, but I will say Judge, when he was a judge, was re-elected twice. And contrary to, I think there was a comment made by a gentleman earlier, but that's the first I've heard of that. But he's, in fact, he's a chair of, he's going to have to step down. He's a chair of our oversight committee, or former chair of our oversight committee. So he's worked well with some council members as well, so ones that are on that. Councillor Bencomo and councillor Abada?
Thanks, mayor. Honestly, I have similar concerns. I, I mean, you get to appoint a lot of people as well, right, that come through the council? And often, we get more information on a candidate for any particular board than we did on this gentleman. And again, I understand that he was the previous judge. I just, I also feel uncomfortable with perhaps the lack of transparency behind the choice. And I'm not saying I wouldn't support it. I just feel like there is very little information. And the information I did get was my own research over the weekend, just sort of Googling some things. And from what I gathered, it was this person's last report that ended up saying that they're, that we did not need to fill a second position, and now we're filling it with him. And so I just, I like, I have some questions about some of that and then how this person works with the elected person that is currently in municipal court. And it's so funny, mayor, because I actually, one of my asks during public comments, it's about municipal court. So when I saw this, I was like, well, this is good alignment. That we're on the same page. But I, I just, I do have some reservations, given the lack of information we're getting from this particular candidate. When, even in other boards, we get a resume, we get a write-up that says, "Why are you interested in this?", right? Like, some of that information is just completely missing.
Again, I just want to circle back that this is one of only, one of three prerogatives that I get. And I mean, on my other appointments, sure, to whether it's planning on zoning or to certain boards, I mean, I just put the name out, but, you know, I mean, I, I figure he's been in the public, he's served well, he's been re-elected twice. You know, that's just, that's kind of where I'm at on that. Councillor Abada?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I've come to really respect Judge Ryan on our oversight committee. His knowledge of the law is very strong. Of course, he served under this. But now he's also gotten an... also gotten an additional insight, I think, of other workings of municipal government. I do have pulled up a Sun News article from 2020 where Judge Goldbaum is saying, "I find myself trying to cover the dockets of two judges and manage the court as well," as she's asking for Municipal Judge Two job to be currently filled. So, we do see, and this was in 2020, so we know the workload has only been increasing since then, so obviously, there is a need to have this on. So, I myself am very much in support of filling the position and giving some of relief to Judge Goldbaum, but also, I truly do respect Judge Ryan and am happy to support him. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Fuentes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I too have had the opportunity to observe and to work with Kieran Ryan in attending the Oversight Committee. And, and my mother, may she rest in peace, was in a horrible car accident, it wasn't her fault, and she wanted to go to court to fight it, and Kieran was the judge, and he said that, yes, he could set it for trial. And I told her that I asked him if it was okay, if I represented her, you know, just a layperson in that capacity, because I'm not licensed to practice in New Mexico, and he said that would be fine, but then my mother decided that, that she really didn't want to go to trial, because she, she was so nervous. But I have to say that Kieran had a, we had to sit, you know, we had to sit there for at least a couple of hours, maybe three, to have everything processed before he got to my mom. I have to say that his demeanor is absolutely wonderful, he's very courteous, he did spend time with each person in the courtroom, and I think he has the disposition, the knowledge, and the disposition, the disposition, the knowledge, and the, the experience of being a member of the bench, so I support the appointment, Mr. Mayor, although you don't really need it, right?
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Protam, did you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I too am in support of the bid's recommendation to bring Judge Ryan into the court system. I have had the opportunity to work with him also in Oversight Committee. Mayor, at times when you're unable to participate, I'm there. He's insightful, he brings a lot of knowledge about the judicial system, something that I think is really important, and I think we all have, from time to time, received emails from Judge Goldbaum related to just the increase in cases and, and really her request for assistance. So I too am in favor of this amendment. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protam. Okay, with that, Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 23-017. Counselor Abada?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Benkomo?
Yes.
Counselor Coran?
No.
Counselor Fuentes?
Yes.
Counselor Gandara?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it very much. Okay, so next, Board Appointments. Where's my paper here? Sometimes I write on things here. So, no Board Appointments. And next is Notice of Proposed Ordinances. There'll be no public discussion. Counselor may ask staff for clarification on the proposed ordinance, number 9.1, Council Bill Number 23-002, Ordinance Number 3008.
Bring it forward.
Bring it forward, okay. Okay, next is City Council Member Board Reports and Comment. Let's see here, just a reminder, Chief, National Night Out, is it next, is it this Tuesday, tomorrow? Tomorrow, 6 o'clock? Okay, just a reminder for that.
At the Plaza, right?
At the Plaza, and Rosie's very close aunt's passed away, so I won't be here, I will be in Los Angeles for the funeral next week, so I won't be here next Monday, but Mayor Protam will run the work session, so just want to share that with you. And Mayor Protam, do you have any comments you'd like to share?
I do, thank you. My condolences to Rosie and to you and the family, Mayor, I'm sorry to hear that. I'll stand ready to preside over the meeting next Monday. A shout-out to staff, specifically Aunt Bon, Enette, Granado, Administration, for the wonderful showing of Lift Up Las Cruces. That block party was phenomenal, and we got so many people attending, I'm excited, and asking when the next one is. We also worked, the Doñana County Resilience Leaders worked on, in conjunction with the city, to put up a mural on Creighton's Catering. I did many live videos sort of showing the progression of the mural, it's looking fantastic. I know our muralist, Laca Al Madrigal, is, was just phenomenal to work with, and she was just so good with the public as well. Special thanks to everybody that came out, I'm really, really appreciative, and so, you know, with that, I'm looking forward to hearing the survey results that went out by mail to the Treeshits area, and then some. There's a specific map, and I was wondering, Mayor, if I could ask people to put the map, like, it's a little difficult to see off the website, and I don't know if there are a different way of doing that, so that people could see what the boundaries are, or maybe listing what their boundaries are more specifically. I don't remember seeing that on the website, but I'm really looking forward to the work and the collaboration with the Sea Valley Housing Authority. They have an office base dedicated specifically to our boss, the D. Officer, and I've talked to them about holding office hours there as well, and so, the neighbors are just really excited, really wanting to lift up and beautify the community, and so, again, just a special thanks to everybody that has anything to do with the planning and organization to that. And then last, Mayor, I am very appreciative of the, the press conference that was held on specific, thank you, Chief Dominguez, for, you know, the facts, but also providing, you know, just a forum for folks to understand what's happening. I know that there are folks that are concerned and fearful about what's happening to our community, and I just want folks to know that me as a counselor and Mayor and Counselor are working towards, you know, helping alleviate sort of, people talked a lot about today, about root causes, to things that are happening specifically in our community, and, you know, I think, I'm so excited that this item for the jail bond has passed, that we can place it, the housing, affordable housing, to $6 million, that is really ensure that folks have a safe space to live, and then they're able to get all the other necessary resources, so I appreciate, I really do appreciate that, and we have our hands full, but I know that this Mayor and Counselor is caring and compassionate, and will continue to work towards alleviating the crime that we're seeing in this community. With that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Counselor Fuentes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report on, well, first of all, my condolences on the passing of Rosie's aunt, and safe travels to you, may the traveling mercies be with you, and I want to express my profound disappointment at seeing Dr. Bayadis's email that he is leaving the city of Las Cruces as our city economist in the city's Department of Development, Economic Development. I'm so sorry, Francisco, that you won't be with us. I think you've been absolutely wonderful and a real gift to the city, and I'm glad that we were able to have you compart your knowledge, your enthusiasm, your wisdom, your intelligence, and your overall positive force that you are. So, thank you, Francisco, and I'm truly, truly profoundly sorry that you are leaving. I hope that you remain active in the economic community, and maybe through Movida or the Borderplex, because you've been instrumental in a lot of the economic development in the city, and I only, I feel that we're upward and onward because of you. Thank you, Francisco. And I wanted to report on the Animal Service Center. Becky Coran, Counselor Coran is the Chair. There isn't a lot to report there, except that TNR has become a thorn at its side. I have to say that I support everything that Clint Thacker has done for the center, and, you know, it made me think about a horrible joke, I won't tell you where it came from, because it's really terrible, but the, the question was, what do you call X, or what's the Spanish word for, you know, for a certain person who is mistreated? And the answer, what's the Spanish word for it, for someone who's been horribly beat up? And I'd have to say that in this case, back then, the answer was piñata. So, you know, what a piñata is, you just take, you know, take it and just bang it and bang it and bang it. And I have to say, with all due respect to those who have been present at the Animal Service Center meetings, that they do care about the animals, but the disrespect and the, and the criticism that has been launched towards Mr. Thacker specifically is inhumane, and it's really interesting how, and it's based on a lot of not really knowing what it takes to run such a facility. And then, a happier note, on the South Central Rapid Transit District, I have to say that Mr. Amico is doing a fantastic job, and ridership is up. Money is coming in from the federal government, of course, Department of Transportation, and he's working very hard again. He keeps focusing on keeping all the bus lines open to really bring the southern part of, well, not all of the southern part of Doñana or New Mexico, but a lot of it, and people are really benefiting, ridership is up. And I want to say to Chief Dominguez that you too are a piñata up here, and sometimes I feel that all of us are piñatas. It's like, just, you know, just come to City Council, and, you know, here we are, just take the bat and start, you know, beating us up. And I think Abe Lincoln is probably the best person to cite, you know, you can please some of the people some of the time, you can please all of the people some of the time, but you, what is it? You can't please all of the people all of the time, you know? I think you all heard it. And, and sometimes I feel that we're up here and we can't win for losing, so I do want to thank our department heads, I know how hard all of you work, I know how challenging it is, and my fellow counselors, Mayor, and City Manager, our City Attorney, our City Clerk, everybody works really hard, folks, and I hope that for those people who are still listening, they understand that this is not an easy job, whether, you know, I don't know what people are paid here, but city counselors are underpaid, in my humble opinion. I think that city counselors should be paid a lot more so that we attract the talent that is needed. I think a lot of, everybody up here makes a sacrifice to be here, and I'm the only one who's really in a lofty position, besides the Mayor being a multimillionaire. I, he's going, no, I'm not. I'm really in a lofty position, because I'm retired and I have income from other sources, but, so we really need to look at that, by the way, and I wish everybody, all the residents who are still listening, to everyone who's here, I want to thank you all for your diligence and dedication to our city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. And, you know, I didn't realize that you were here, Dr. Bayadis. I always look for you right here. Yeah, I'm gonna miss you. You know, you've done so much for our, our city, our relationship with our friends there in Mexico and others, but you just have learned a lot from you, and really, you know, that's what happens, I guess, when Eiffel hires smart people, you know, the other companies come and, you know, take them away and offer them all kinds of money, so good luck to you on your position, we'll miss you, and hopefully, you'll still be in the region somewhere. I don't know what school you're gonna be at, but anyways, congratulations and thanks for all that you do. Counselor Coran?
Thank you. We will miss you, Dr. Bayadis, so thank you very much. I do want to just revisit something that Counselor Fuentes said about the ASC and the TNR. On the bright side, they, the board did support hiring a TNR coordinator, and a number of new things happening at the shelter to bring it onboard for December, the December opening, and then we also just saw how the shelter could look if it were increasing capacity using the old, the old shelter facility to do more surgeries, and so I think they are, they have sort of just gotten their, that map planning process sort of onboard, and so I thank Counselor Gandara, who serves on the Facilities Committee as well, for helping move that forward so that we can also talk about capacity for low-cost spain neuter surgeries and things like that in the future that I think we all find really important. And one other note about upcoming or past meetings, tomorrow morning, the TSI PRC will meet in Conference Room 2007A, and it's going to be one of those times where we're really seeking the input of the committee members and the expertise of the community members in particular, who attend that committee, and so I really appreciate the staff, in particular, Andy and Lisa, who have worked really hard to develop a way of assimilating a bunch of, TSI stands for transport, for those listening, transportation, sustainability, and infrastructure, which is really a lot of things, and so, I appreciate the possibility for us to look at, elevate policies and identify some for prioritization, and just thinking about, you know, public commenter Carrie Bachmann's insight about how we can be more participatory and including more voices, and so I'm hoping that this will be one tiny opportunity to do so, so I look forward to seeing folks at the TSI, PSI, PRC tomorrow. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Benkomo?
Thanks, Mayor. I have a couple comments, and then I have a couple of asks, requests. First of all, I, we had our third faith for the unhoused meeting last week on Thursday. We keep getting really great turnout from faith leaders and clergy who have come out. You know, I come from community organizing in a faith space, and so I deeply believe that clergy plays such a powerful role in our community, and particularly in addressing the needs of the most vulnerable, and so I've been very happy to be working with that group of people. Last week, we had Community of Hope come in and give them a training on de-escalation practices, what happens when you, someone comes into your congregation needing, needing support, who are in distress, perhaps agitated, what are the best practices from the folks who are on the frontlines, and it was really well-received, and I'm really excited about what that group of folks is going to come up with to play a role in how we address issues that our unhoused neighbors are facing. And then number two, I also had our, we had our third, maybe second, Wes Picacho, second, thank you. Cynthia, thank you for all your help, by the way, on all of these meetings, but we had our second, Wes Picacho Small Business Meeting, that's going really, really well. We also had an incredible turnout at Extreme Garage from a bunch of small business owners right in the area. We had small business owners, the motel owners came, it's been a really great show. I really want to thank Officer Glym for coming in and doing his presentation on the Small Business Watch, which they're all starting down Wes Picacho, and then codes as well, and I think we're gonna launch an impact project along Wes Picacho to really just talk to folks about some of the code violations and helping them get into compliance, but I'm really excited about the work we're doing there. Obviously, right now, the biggest sort of issue on people's hearts is public safety, but the reality is that folks who've invested their money, sweat, tears, and joy into their business along the corridor, remember that corridor being something totally different than it is now, and they want to get And they want to get it back to that glory and really get it, you know, and us to invest in it in a meaningful way as the historic corridor that it is. And frankly, the beginning of town. That is the corridor that welcomes so many people coming in from the west side. I was trying to do my never eat sour waffles, sour watermelon, soggy waffles. And, which is such an important corridor. And so I'm really excited about what will come out of that. We have a lot of short-term plans, medium plans, and long-term plans for that community. We will have our third meeting. I don't have the date right in front of me, but we'll have a third meeting next month. Cynthia will help me pass that information out. But I hope, if you know folks again that are in that area, please invite them. My two questions, one of them is related to that. I've spoken with EFO about this already. But, you know, when we did the El Paso-Salano Ad-Hoc Committee, one of the outcomes of that was that we established an MRA, a Metropolitan Redevelopment Area, for that overlay, the, El Paso-Salano. And then I raised the issue of West Picacho. And so Economic Development said, we want to do a BLIGHT study all over the city before we begin doing some of these things. However, while I agree with that, that that's a really important project to undertake, a BLIGHT study, because there may be areas in the city that we're not even aware of. We know of two very specific areas that need that kind of support, including El Paso-Salano is one, and the West Picacho is a second one. We know there's BLIGHT. We know there's lots of abandoned buildings. And so, mayor, I'd like to, I don't know what the pathway forward is, but I would like us and city manager to prepare, whether that's a resolution or an ordinance, to begin the process of what it would take to establish two MRAs in those areas. And, you know, last week, before I talked to EFO in my one-to-one with him, I found this incredible one-pager from New Mexico Main Street that talked about the benefits of MRAs. And one of the biggest things I took away from it says, "The designation of an MRA allows for the contribution of public resources to private redevelopment projects, thereby providing a workaround to the state's anti-donation clause." And I think this is such a vital piece to an MRA, because we know that they don't have a funding source like a TID, even though I know that Economic Development is gonna try to, you know, work with the legislature. And sorry, I know I'm going wrong, but this is really important. I know that they're gonna try to work with the legislature to get some sort of funding attachment to the MRA. I know Senator Kira Hamlin, I've spoken with her. She's very interested in championing something like this. And so I would just like us to move forward with what this could look like for those two areas. And then the second one, actually, like I said earlier, mayor, I would really love to have municipal court judge Goldbaum come to a work session soon. I feel like we've been asking for one for a while, not just about some of the unpaid bills. But honestly, like, I want to understand better what the process is like, what her workload has been like. There's been a lot of conversation about public safety and the intersection of that in her court. And I want to hear directly from her what's been going on. And I want us to be able to ask questions and I'd rather do that sooner than later. So I would like to request that, you know, you put her on the work session soon. So, those were my two questions. Thank you all for bearing with me.
Councillor, thank you. Yeah, I have no, we can schedule a work session with Judge Goldbaum, absolutely. Getting back to your question about the El Paso-Salano corridor. And I don't, I don't know if councillor Coran or councillor Graham are aware of this. So I have a business on Salano. And when former councillor Voskus wanted to include that, I said, you know what? I'm gonna have to abstain from all discussion. So I've just pulled back totally. And I hope you understand that, because, you know, I don't, I don't want to have there being appearance of any impropriety there. Now, my suggestion, if you would, is split, split it up. Just put Salano on the back burner and let's just focus on El Paso. Because I had a lot of things going, that was on my state-of-the-city address. I was gonna work on this with the university to get a, like a trolley, so to speak. And when I say trolley, it'd be regular bus. But on and off every 15 minutes, going down between the university and downtown. There are developers who want to help with some affordable housing all along the corridor. Just many things, but I can't, I can't do it right now. You know, if the council, you know, wants to kind of re-energize this again, just do me that favor, split it up so that it's just El Paso only. I think it affects three of your districts. I think it's district two, three, and even four, you know? And we can get this thing moving, but right now, I just have to sit back from the sidelines.
I understand, mayor, but I, I mean, I think the overlay district that we discussed was a really powerful block. I mean, it was significant, I mean, it wasn't huge, honestly. It was pretty small. And I understand your ethical duty to recuse yourself, but I think that's one person for the greater good. I would like to keep it together and I would like to move forward. I don't know, do I go, do you want me to go through Mayor Protem instead?
Sure, that'd be fine. No, I have no problem.
Yeah, there, I was gonna suggest that if I could.
Yes, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Yes, I was gonna suggest if you're recruiting yourself that I can have a conversation with councillor Bencomo and we move it forward alongside EFO.
Okay, sure, not a problem.
I think it's an important thing to not separate, particularly with lift-up Las Cruces and what I think is going to be the second area, which would be in councillor Graham's area, also receiving, you know, having the most distress. It just doesn't make sense to separate that out. And I'm in complete agreement to keep those two together. I think it's vital for that community, for that entire area. Thank you.
Not a problem. I'll just be sitting at the sidelines cheering you on. Moral support.
Thank you, mayor Protem.
Go ahead.
Councillor Graham?
Thank you, mayor. Also, want to call out Dr. Payares. We'll shout out Dr. Payares. I know this is such a tiny, tiny, tiny portion of what you do, but the jobs of the week are not gonna be the same without you. But congratulations. I'm sure you're on to amazing things and you are going to be greatly missed. My only note for the week is a small but very important shout-out to the team that made the Bellama Street Reconstruction Project public meeting happen last week. So, I wanted to thank David Sidio, Tony Trevino, Jimmy Moreno, Ko Ting Lee, Oscar Guerrero, Adrian Guzman, or who else, I'm not sure who else was in the booth with you, Monica Perez Mesa, and Magdalena Jaron, and of course Cynthia, who had the, maybe the toughest job of all of time to sit next to me and field my whispered questions. And I think as somebody who studied professional communication for a huge chunk of my adult life, I really appreciate how the Public Works Department is able to balance really technical information with people's very important lives, everyday concerns. And I got to watch how the Public Works team shifted back and forth between those two roles, and it was very cool to see. So, thank you for making these things happen. And I just get to show up and wave. So, thank you so much. That's all, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Becta?
Thank you, mayor. And thank you for mentioning National Night Out, which will be held from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. tomorrow at the Downtown Plaza. So, thank you. Only one other kind of mention that I have. I will be giving a copy of the proposed new 2022-2023 annual resolutions from the New Mexico Municipal League to our city clerk, so that she can distribute those out. I've also given one to the city manager. It is a pretty hefty packet, so if you have specific questions, I will say, let's get you a copy of the resolutions first. And then I do want to mention my, my use of personal privilege for the standards rules of procedure. With that, and with how we have it written and how people utilize, how they speak to councillors, to city staff, to everybody, it varies. And tone usage, those are all things. I've spoke up before when I felt that there was inappropriate conduct and use of a person's time at the podium. And I wanted to do the same to them. The individual, I felt, was utilizing first names as a way to degrade my fellow colleagues. It is often what happens, especially when you have women in power, that instead of using a title such as mayor, such as chief, that they will use a first name instead. And that happened multiple times, and I let the first time go. And when the individual came back up and started utilizing it again, that's where I felt the need to step in and to at least reference the rules of procedure. And just as we will correct for staff members, I feel like it's important to correct for my fellow councillors. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. EFO, city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor. First of all, I also appreciate the council recognizing Dr. Payares. And we are certainly gonna miss him. I do want to say, you know, it was my conversations with Dr. Payares that really shifted my view. He was one of the ones that really, you know, I prided myself in being an expert in, well, I don't know about expert, but I dedicated myself to the craft of economic development for years. And having a conversation, one conversation with Dr. Payares caused me to reflect and even shift a little bit. And so he's having a lasting impact on this organization. And I wish him well. We'll have opportunity, of course, to talk and we'll have staff meetings where I can, I can express my appreciation. But I appreciate your counsel in recognizing his efforts and the legacy he's gonna leave here. Just a couple of other items. Appreciate Mayor Protem recognizing the lift-up. And if I can just express my appreciation to all our departments, all the staff that was there, and all the team that made it possible. Amber Vaughn was our project manager on it, carrying it through. And then our Economic Development Department, and again, all our department heads, public safety, everybody that was there, Parks and Rec. I don't wanna keep naming, because it's basically all our department heads, all our departments. And then, and especially the community. It was really neat to see all the nonprofits and all the entities out there supporting. So I just wanna, wanna recognize all the efforts that have been done. Couple of announcements. This is from Econny, just a reminder about the preparation for the Great American Shakeout, October 20th, 2022. Both city staff and city council will begin emergency preparedness training in the upcoming weeks. City council should expect emails very soon to schedule the in-person emergency management training, specifically for elected officials, for dates later in August. The purpose of this training is to give an overview of the ICS system for elected officials and cover basic ICS principles and how ICS is critically important for supporting effective emergency management. Also, from our communication, it's just info on last Wednesday. The city and LCPD partnered with Las Cruces Public Schools to put on a public safety forum last Wednesday. And it was televised on Comcast, Channel 20, and is available on YouTube. The forum highlighted the partnership we have with the schools and gave some information about how we're working together to make school safety a priority and that we have plans in place should the wars happen. And so appreciate LCPD and received comments and commendations from our public schools for that work they did in the forum that they put together. And then just wanted to inform you of our funding that we received. I know some of you may have seen an email, but I just wanted to make, this is from Amy, with our federal requests. And as you know, we've had a, we've contracted with our federal lobbyists. So there's a lot of work that's being done with our federal lobbyists and our grants team. I know councillor Becta and Andy Hume went to DC. And so we requested a total of about 11.3 million. We received, there's 3.2 million that is going for, for funding, for bills. The Mobile Integrated Health Program, the proposed allocation is 547,000. Project Light is 485,000. Southern New Mexico Regional Critical Response Teams proposed 1.75 million. And then Public Safety Technology, there's proposed allocation of 450,000. Also, the Mesia Valley Public Housing Authority proposed allocation of 2.2 million for affordable housing. This is a collaborative partnership with the city of Las Cruces. So, actually, with this MVPHA, the allocation will be 5.4 million is what we, we asked for 11.3. So just keep asking. But appreciate all the work that's been done from our grants team and our federal lobbyists and also councillor Becta and Andy going to DC. I think it's paying off. So, I think that's all I have, mayor and council. Thank you.
You know, before we adjourn, there is one other item. In fact, it does involve Dr. Payares, if I could ask him to come forward. I was thinking of something, and I want to run this by you, Dr. Payares, and see if you, if you think this is even viable. And then, of course, if council supports this, then we can make contact with this particular company. So, I don't know if any of you are aware of or have ever flown out of the Wadis Airport. It's relative, it takes about a half hour, even after you, after you get into Wadis to get there. It's, you know, pretty far away. But the airfare is so inexpensive. It's incredible. So, Dr. Payares, this is what I was thinking. You know, our airport can sustain the 737s. It's just that for Southwest, American Airlines, it doesn't make sense to work. But I was thinking, if, if we could reach out to Viva Volades or Viva Arus, one of those companies, to, if they flew into Las Cruces, because it's an international airport, we would attract so many people who want to, who want to fly into Mexico and, you know, and vice versa. And I think the traffic would be there. I bet you even people from El Paso would drive to Las Cruces to fly out. And it would be, and then, some of those planes, they fly to LA. Volades, I know, goes to LA. And so, my, my question is, what do you think about that? And is that so? I mean, we can maybe, if council supports this, then maybe we can reach out to those airline companies and see if they'd be willing to entertain that. Because I think we'd have a market on that. No one would want, there's no one that's doing that right now.
Mayor, I thought you were gonna offer him like a farewell trip or something.
What's that?
Your salary would be doubled. I promise you.
I just didn't know where you were going with it. And I thought you were gonna offer him a farewell trip.
Off to Mazatlán.
Well, just to give you an example, from Wadis to Cancun is 200 bucks round trip. 200? No, but, but, I mean, it would be an avenue for, for us to have access to that. I think it'd be pretty fun.
Maybe it's something you can discuss with Andy Hume.
Yes. I wanted to hear what his.
Because we are an international airport, but we lost, but something, there's something, well, you know more about it than I do, probably, but that's an excellent idea, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. And if Andy's hearing me, maybe he can teams me or something, so hopefully I don't say anything inappropriate or wrong. But the, there have been, there has been in the past interest from Mexican airlines, Mr. Mayor, to operate out of the Las Cruces International Airport. I can think of one. I think the name was TAS. I think they're headquartered in Queretaro. It's called TAS Airlines. And they were interested specifically in a trip to Mazatlán. So having a route, Las Cruces-Mazatlán, and that was back in 2018, so that, right around there. I think that we can definitely resume some of those conversations and we can reach out. I think I still have a point of contact with them, so I can, I can ask Andy to do the follow-up. I doubt that I can land them in the next two weeks, Mr. Mayor, but I can, I can reach out to Andy to, just to ensure that there's an interest from council to establish that connection.
Is that something you all would support, at least looking into?
Yes, and if you don't do it, you can't leave. You can't leave until you make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
But yes.
It's, I think it would be great, because it would really open up. And then you have access to these other markets. They fly. They fly to Denver, they fly to LA, some of these, these airlines, I mean, and they'd have the exclusive, and I'm almost certain that El Pasoans would drive to Las Cruces. I don't know, I think they would. Yeah, right, and so, okay, well, good. That just popped into my head when I saw you over there, so I wanted to ask you about that, and I thought, yeah, a little bit too late, so, good.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Payadas. Okay, well, we'll entertain motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second by Flórez.
Was that councillor Bencomo? Okay, motion, second by councillor Flórez. Christine?
This is on a motion to adjourn the regular meeting. Councillor Becta?
Yes.
Councillor Graham?
Yes.
Councillor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councillor Carran?
Yes.
Councillor Flórez?
Yes.
Councillor Gandra?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Okay, it's for?
Ms. Delilah Wash?
39 PM.
Is it true?
We are adjourned.
You're having another baby, right?
Thank you.